Good morning, welcome to the Tuesday April 9th meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment, prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send a written comment by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact us at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would the clerk please call the first item?
All right, your first item are public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda, and our first speaker is Mr. Stinson.
I'm a little nervous, so, excuse me. I'm talking about zoning in the Wilton area. I've been to the Planning Commission several, I mean, not the, yeah, the Planning Commission, each time I get confusion. I live on Randolph Road. I have 15 parcels on the north side of the road with two-acre parcels. On the south side, there are 16 parcels with five acres zoning with many people living in a converted barn or trailer back of property away from public view. In other areas, there are 22 parcels zoned, two acres. These parcels are located within one mile. My parcel is five, two five-acre parcels, but they're less than that because of the way they design it. No Swenson-Hawke fees are required, but I still get the Swenson-Hawke. Each time I met with the planner, I am told the Board of Supervisors make the decision to split my property. The estimated cost to split a property is around $65,000, not including plot maps and other fees. I was told by professionals who work in the area, in the surveying area, it will cost me in excess of $100,000. Everything I read and say that the Board has the option to change. There is a demand for two-acre parcels in my area. The zoning change would not cause problems with large farmers or anybody else. I have copies of map if you want to see how they're laid out. One of the flooding, one acre of flooding irrigation is equivalent to 23 homes. So you're stopping people saying, "We don't want this flood, all this property," but if you put two-acre parcels, you save money and water. According to the well drill in the area, there's enough water, I'm trying to, there's enough water for everyone. I'm trying to keep my wife and myself out of a residential care home as we get older. We're unable to do a lot of things ourselves.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Stinson?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's it. Oh, okay. The bottom line, they want me to put up $65,000 with no warranty. And I think you're crazy if you do that.
Thank you, sir. And so you're aware, we, our staff takes notes, we listen, but when it's off-agenda, we can't really make much comment because it's not properly noticed.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Monica?
Hi, members of the Board. My name is Monica Madrid. I'm a resident of unincorporated Sacramento County. I live in Supervisor Humes District. I work for the National Union of Healthcare Workers. I'm here today on behalf of the members that work at Center for Psychiatry. Center does give a lot of, or the county does give funding to the Center for Psychiatry, but they're not willing to bargain in good faith. Yesterday, we were at the bargaining table. We got there at 9:30. We didn't meet with management until 5:30, and management didn't give us any proposals. So they're not taking the workers seriously. The workers are asking for a living wage, and we went on, they went on, the workers went on strike in December with a one-day strike because of that and because of understaffing and not willing to pay their workers well. And during the time, around the time that they were on strike, maybe a little bit before they were on strike, there was a suicide in the hospital because of understaffing. And the reason why there's understaffing is because people don't want to work there. People don't want to work there because they're not paying proper wages. Last week, there are a bunch of workers right now that are working double shifts. Last week, I went there in the, at the night shift to visit some of our workers, and I found out that they just, they tried to stop, they just were able, they were able to stop another suicide from happening, and this suicide was a child. And so these workers are fairly underpaid, they're in a very unsafe environment, they're refusing to give them hazard pay, and all they're asking for is a fair contract. So we're asking the Supervisors to call Daniel Peterson and ask him to bargain in good faith and actually, let's get this contract done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Harris?
Not seeing him.
Sorry, had to wait outside. I don't feel very well, and giving you guys no longer allow us to call in, you're kind of forcing me to come up here, which is an extreme inconvenience for me. I don't know why you guys took that right away. Well, with the time I have remaining, I guess I'll just, I've tried to plead to you guys for many years and you guys haven't heard me, so I'll continue to come here to say, hopefully Gavin Newsom is listening. You could thank this Board here, Gavin, because they've caused me to look into why you may be ignoring what I have to say or why they may be ignoring. And as I was looking into Gavin Newsom, I guess I found out also, which many of you I'm sure are very aware, of his infidelity and how Gavin Newsom had cheated on his wife with his best friend, also his campaign manager's wife. And so it just kind of opens my eyes to that. If you can't care about someone that much, and I see it's very top-down leadership here in California, then, you know, how can you care about the rest of us? And how can we expect you all to care about the rest of us if that's your guys' leadership and that's who you guys are looking up to? So, yeah, it's, it's just kind of opened my eyes to that and makes me more understanding. I know I've mentioned in the past of other people who were promoted to directors with a history of beating their wives or physical abuse to their wives, and you guys appoint them to directors. So I guess you beat your wife here, you continue to move up.
Any more public comment?
That concludes your public comment.
Okay, then next item, please.
Okay. For your consent, items 2 through 32. For item 20, you're adopting an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks regulations and prohibitions. You waive reading on this on March 26th, and that's all I have for my notes.
Okay, thank you. We do have some Supervisors punched in. I'm going to start with polling item number 23.
Okay.
Let's let the other Supervisors chime in here. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, not pull, but call out for quick comments, clarification on item three.
Okay. So item three is the approval of the reallocation in American Rescue Plan Act funds for new uses in the housing and homelessness and health strategic investments.
And just for the benefit of the public, just wanted to ask Shifan if the funds that are being returned to the general fund will come back to the Board upon for any reallocation of funds, so will, or will they just be dispersed automatically from there?
Yeah, thank you. So the ARPA funding letter that you have in front of you, what it does is it does, there were certain ARPA projects that were underspent, and those projects are going to be redistributed back into the homeless or health pots, but in order for us to get approval for new projects to come to fruition, we would bring those project by project back to the Board. So the Board will have the ability to approve the projects that the money gets redistributed to, if that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, that, I'm, as I know you know, we've had these conversations behind the scenes that I have a special interest in the vaccine shot campaign and would not want to support it, so wanted to be, have a heads up if it was coming back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that satisfies what I'm asking. Also wanted to pull item number six.
Okay. Item six is retroactive approval to apply and accept if awarded the 2022 Wildfire County Coordinator Program Northern Grant.
And I just wanted to once again give out a special thanks to the county staff for your efforts to have an eye on wildfire safety. I want to thank you for looking out for the Fire Safe Council of Sacramento, and I also want to acknowledge and thank all the Fire Safe Councils. I know Rancho Marietta is working really hard in their small area, but I know there's other areas in Sacramento County that are focused on this also, so thank you for your efforts to find money for supporting those, those things. And then lastly, I wanted to call item number 10.
Item 10 is the declaration of contest results for March 5th, 2024 presidential primary.
I want to congratulate Supervisor Desmond on his 100% win. And I know how hard that campaign must have been. And I also want to especially congratulate Supervisor-elect Rosario Rodriguez, who surprisingly won in the primary, and I'm delighted. I know she'll have extra time to prepare for getting a good start in January when she comes on Board, and so I'm excited to certify this election, and so that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Is it too late to call for a recount? Can I call for a recount? Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, I'd like to make a quick comment and a request of staff on item 23.
For?
No, item 26, sorry.
26. Yes, retroactive authority to apply for and accept grant funds from the State of California Department of Healthcare Services, authority to execute a revenue agreement, also to, authority to execute a multi-year expenditure agreement with WellSpace Health, and this is for the provisions of crisis receiving for behavioral health services through providing access and transforming health grant program.
Okay, thank you. Well, first, I'm very supportive of this and I want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I'm also very supportive of the crisis receiving for behavioral health, the Crib, as it's affectionately known. I think it is filling a very valuable gap. I see we have representatives from WellSpace in the audience, so thank you for your efforts. My, just request from staff, I'd like to get a report back to me directly, I mean, would be great, just on, on what the plans are for the Crib, how many people is it serving, just kind of a, what can the county do, if anything, to continue its support? I mean, I know this started out as, I think it was an effort that was initially supported by the city and county jointly, but now it's just the county supporting it, it's ongoing operations, is that correct, Shifan?
That is correct.
Okay. So just a report back on, on just kind of their success and how do we, what do we need to do to make sure that that continues and expands? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did pull 23, which we will have a discussion on, a short discussion on that after the consent. Is there any other member of the Board? Seeing none, is there any public comment on consent?
We do not.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move the remainder of the consent counter. Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Villanueva?
Thank you, Chair Kennedy and the Board. As part of your action on part of the consent agenda is approval of item number four. This action is to authorize the appointment of Anita Maldonado as the Executive Director for the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, more affectionately known as SETA. This is one of a three-legged stool that needs approval for an executive director to be appointed to this JPA. The JPA is a combination between the County of Sacramento and the City of Sacramento. So with your action today, this is one leg by approving my recommendation to you. The city council is going to take this up later today, and on March, earlier, later in March, we also had the federal government head start approve that, so we're well on its path to have Anita starting tomorrow with SETA. So just a little bit back about Anita. Anita has 25 years of experience in the nonprofit administration, which suits her very well for this position. Most recently, Anita was the CEO of the Social Advocates for Youth in Santa Rosa. Prior to that, she was the CEO of California Human Development, also in Santa Rosa, where she held various leadership roles in social services agencies since 1997. Anita has a PhD in higher education administration, a master's in public administration, and a bachelor's of art in political science. One of the things I want to do is make sure I recognize Diette Sanborn. She was the interim executive officer when, I think it's been about six months now since she's been running SETA, and she's been doing a fantastic job, and I want to thank her personally for that. And with that, and again, thank you for your vote, I'd like to invite Anita up to say a couple of words.
Ms. Maldonado. And thank you for calling out Diette, by the way.
Thank you so much, and good morning, Supervisors. I want to thank you, Mr. Villanueva, for your support during my hiring process, and also I'd like to acknowledge both Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy. I know I'll be working very closely with you through the SETA governing board. Again, a special thanks to the SETA staff for working to meet people where they're at and fulfilling the mission of SETA, and also to Diette for stepping in as interim. My plan is to listen, learn, and work together in order to reach SETA's fullest potential. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item number 23, please.
Okay, for item 23. This is to adopt the amended Sacramento County Mental Health Board Community Wellness Response Team Advisory Committee bylaws.
Thank you. I have a couple of issues with this item. One is the term of seven to 10 years of service since, being in law enforcement, it doesn't make any sense, it's teleological. It's either seven years, it's 10 years, it's something, it's between seven and 10, just, it doesn't make sense. So I couldn't be supporting it just on that face. And then from a personal note, I do think that it's overly restrictive and to just categorically deny anyone with law enforcement background to be a part of a role that, you know, there's expertise there that could make this program better. I think that, I just don't agree with that. As an example, there's a member of this very Board sitting to my right who could not serve on this Board, but he can approve it, he can formulate it, but he can't serve on it. Our own deputy CEO of criminal justice couldn't serve on this, and I can't think of anybody who probably can bring as much expertise as he can to this role. So it's just, it's something that I have a problem with. We can, I don't want to have a prolonged discussion because I think there's, there's opportunity to clean it up. What I would prefer to do, and it's the pleasure of the Board, is to send it back to the organization and have them do some cleanup on this. Whether or not they agree with my position on law enforcement, that's neither here nor there, but even if that wasn't the case, the seven to 10-year thing just doesn't make sense, it needs cleanup. So I see there's a couple of Board members who have chimed in, but before we go to that, Lisa, if, in order to just send it back, do we need a motion to do that?
I think it's probably worth doing that for this, because we are, they've been asked, they've asked you to approve it, and you're not going to it this time, so I think if you make the motion to send it back, that's the cleanest way to do it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I just want to completely concur with Supervisor Kennedy's comments and also add that in my experience with large, major private corporations, usually, generally, a no-compete clause is around two years, it's not seven to 10 years. And so I thought it was onerous as well, and so I concur. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
I also concur completely with your suggestions, and I think there may be other disqualifying reasons as to why someone might not serve on that Board, but, no, but I think that with the motion, we should provide clear direction to either strike the provision or give them what we think is a reasonable timeframe. I think just kicking it back to them allows them to sort of stew in it again.
Yeah, agreed, thank you. Then I will make that motion that we send this back to the CWRT to have them take another look at this and refine it in ways that would make sense, and to at least take into consideration that at least three Board members up here have voiced concern with the overall concept of eliminating just wholeheartedly the participation of law enforcement in this.
Make it four, one second. Five.
Okay, there we go. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Right. Item 33 is the presentation of resolution declaring April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness
Is Stephanie or Skip here today? Sexual violence affects all people regardless of geography, race, age, ethnicity, gender, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or economic background. The National Sexual Violence Resource Center reports that one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted while attending college. The US Department of Justice estimates that 90% of campus sexual assaults are committed by perpetrators that the victim knows. In addition, approximately 90% of all college sexual assaults go unreported and therefore unaddressed. Sacramento State's Title IX Department, the Office of Equal Opportunity, receives reports for 238 instances of sexual assault, sexual misconduct, dating domestic violence, and stalking from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. The OEO's mission is to foster an equitable environment free from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, as well as interpersonal violence for the Sacramento State community for responding to incidents, reports, consulting with campus partners, and delivering educational programs for students and employees. The OEO also oversees and leads the campus sexual violence prevention effort. Sacramento State's Sexual Violence Awareness Team, comprised of 27 employees and students across 16 different departments, comes together monthly to discuss the prevalence of sexual violence on campus and strategize about how to address and prevent it. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community, including college campuses, and aims to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities about how to prevent it. This work is incredibly important, not just to Sacramento State, but as Sacramento State is the leader of education in Sacramento County and a leader in educating Sacramento County, it's incredibly important that we have built into the lexicon of our college campuses that this is unacceptable, that there's a zero-tolerance policy, and the good work that the folks do at Sacramento State is much appreciated throughout the community. So with that, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, joins with California State University Sacramento's Office for Equal Opportunity in communities and people from throughout California and the nation by proclaiming the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Sacramento County, and observing the month as an important time to speak out, stand with, and support sexual assault survivors, and further encourages the community to strengthen efforts to prevent sexual assault. With that, would you like to say anything?
So first, thank you for having us here. By way of introduction, my name is Skip Bishop. I am the Executive Director of Equal Opportunity at Sacramento State. I'm also the university's Title IX Coordinator. With me, Associate Director Stephanie Cruz and our wonderful administrative assistant, Arianna Harper. So I want to point them out because we can't do this alone. We work as a team, we work with our campus community, and it's a collective effort. So with that, on behalf of SacState's Office for Equal Opportunity and the Division of Inclusive Excellence, we extend our deepest gratitude for this resolution acknowledging our efforts to prevent sexual violence on campus. Your recognition fuels our commitment to fostering a safe and inclusive environment for all members of our campus community, and together we will continue to strive for a campus that's free from all forms of discrimination and harassment. So again, thank you for this honor, it's really appreciated, and we will continue, continue the hard work.
Before we take a photo, I would be remiss if not pointing out that you are dressed like a University of California mascot. What's going on?
You got me with my egg.
Come on.
Item 34 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I won't take that personally. Good morning, Chair, Board members. Michelle Callejas, Director of Child Family and Adult Services, and I'm going to keep my part short, even though this is prevention, and you know how excited I get about prevention. But I do want to express my gratitude to this Board's ongoing this board's ongoing commitment to investing in prevention and early intervention services. These are services that have promoted protective factors, strengthened families, and prevented child abuse, and not just in our department, but also in our Health Services Department. The incredible partnerships we have for mental health services, substance use treatment, public health nurses, all work together to help promote strengthening families and health and well-being. I also want to recognize the work of our community providers that are invested in the prevention area. You're all familiar with the Black Child Legacy Campaign, all the community incubator lead sites. We also have our partners at the Child Abuse Prevention Center that have, and Janay, our brand-new CEO, President of Child Abuse Prevention Center, will go more into the history, but historically, this county has invested in strengthening services within all our family resource centers. And I attribute that with the excellence in services provided by our social workers. To, I attribute our gains to both entities. Our department cannot do this alone, and we rely on our community partners. So in the last nine years, we have reduced monthly entries into foster care by 63%. This means we are safely keeping children with families and preventing the trauma that comes with family separation and trauma that comes just from being in the child welfare system. So it's an incredible accomplishment that comes with funding, resources, and strong partnerships. We've also reduced the number of children in foster care by 56.8%. It's incredible, and we know we can do better. I'm hoping by next month, and I just wait for that data each month, to get to 57% and continue keeping families and children safely together. So thank you for that. I'd like to introduce Janay Eustace, and she is the new President and CEO of our Child Abuse Prevention Center.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Michelle, and good morning, everyone. And it's such an honor to be here to present in front of you today. I'd like to recognize that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and not only as a former child welfare social worker, but also someone who experienced foster care firsthand here in our county. The connection to this work is very deeply, deeply ties to me, and the work of the Child Abuse Prevention Center has been led, with you all, of course, and with folks like Sheila Boxley, who I met when I was just 17 years old. Let's take a moment and recognize the amazing staff who work at the Child Abuse Prevention Center, as we can take this time to see that it is no small task, and it's important that we center the implementation of sustaining these amazing programs that lead, that really connect and lead our prevention on the ground. And this is our team here. Thank you so much for that. In the time that I was in care, Sacramento County actually had the second-largest children in the foster care system, and that was second to LA, to Los Angeles County. Today, we see about 900 kids at any given day here in this system, which is still a lot of children in care, but it's because of the leadership of Michelle and your amazing investment and commitment to prevention that we've gotten here. And that's really deep, and I think Michelle definitely mentioned that before. CAPC was founded in 1977, so we are almost 50 years old. And we have been providing critical services in the Sacramento community, the work that is deep, community-building work, connecting, partnering to prevent child abuse and neglect. It's important to understand the impact of child abuse on the county budget. Safe and Sound and the UC Berkeley, sorry, High School of Business estimated in 2022 the financial impact on Sacramento County for child abuse at 85, 8, I'm sorry, $858 million, and that's for the 1,959 verified child abuse survivors. For the past 48 years, the Child Abuse Prevention Center has partnered with agencies, hospitals, and community-based organizations to develop the effective programming so parents can acquire knowledge and skills that they need, so no child should bear abuse. Over 25 years ago, CAPC and the then DHHS, supported by the Board of Supervisors, committed to a prevention model to strengthen our most vulnerable communities. And nearly 15 years ago, in response to the county child death review data coordinated by CAPC, the leadership and Supervisor Serna, the Blue Ribbon Commission that was formed to begin the large task of really tackling the over-representation of Black and African-American children in the foster care system. The results have been remarkable. Since 2015, there have been a 60% reduction, and that's something to say again because that's huge, a 60% reduction in monthly foster care entries, 57% reduction in the repeat maltreatment, and 56 reduction in the number of kids who enter care through child abuse, I'm sorry, the number of children in foster care, and an 85% reduction in CAN homicides. And that is in the African-American community ages 0 to 5 due to the prevention services from county agencies, Birth &amp; Beyond, Black Child Legacy Campaign, and other supports. The Birth &amp; Beyond Collaborative is comprised of nine family resource centers and 70 community-based organizations, which is pivotal to helping children and families from entering the foster care system. In 2022, 23, 492 caregivers and parents, nearly 80% being court-mandated, and that's really important to note, attended 88 groups, parenting education workshops offered by Birth &amp; Beyond Family Resource Centers. Birth &amp; Beyond Family Resource Centers facilitated the Make Parenting a Pleasure and Effective Black Parenting Program education models. Most participants engaged in the MAP, and in part because programs were court-ordered and mandated. Birth &amp; Beyond offers three evidence-based home visitation programs and measures CPS outcomes for all home visiting participants. An independent evaluator found that Black and African-Americans, home visiting participants had lower than, lower than countywide CPS allegations, 1% compared to 1.5% countywide. Additionally, Black and African-American home visitor, visiting participants had lower levels of CPS involvement, and that's huge. I'm truly honored to be here today and to work towards this mission with you all in partnership, and thank you so much for the space and time on the agenda. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I appreciate your words, and Michelle, yours as well, and always kind of look forward to this month to support the old pinwheel. And I just want to point out, too, that there was reference just now to other sister agencies that make similar investments to address what I firmly believe is our most important charge as a county, which is to look after the welfare, the health, and appropriate development of our youngest constituents. But as Chair of the First Five Commission now for 13 years, I also want to point out that that particular agency also has a very focused eye on investment and making sure we get the outcomes that we all want when it comes to making sure that child abuse and neglect is going in the right direction, which is down. So again, can't thank CAPC enough. Michelle, you've been a stalwart champion in my tenure, and I just am very proud to be a very small part of this organization, Sacramento County, when it comes to this most critical responsibility. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say this because it bears a repeating 60% fewer monthly entries into foster care and reduction in CPS involvement. And, you know, when the only tool you have is a hammer and everything looks like a nail, this is the exact opposite of that, where we are identifying environmental triggers and stressors and, and teaching better coping skills and better family units. And, you know, we talk a lot about getting upstream, and that's what I see this as being. And so congratulations, all of you, on the work that you're doing, and thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item 35 is County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearings on the Benefit Category Change and Levis of Increased Service Charges for the Gerber Creek Two, Gerber Creek Three, and Villages at Elder Creek Two subdivisions.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick, County Engineering, here to present this item. So the Gerber Creek Unit Two subdivision is located approximately 3,000 feet south of Florin Road, east of and adjacent to Gardner Avenue, and proposes 50 single-family parcels. Gerber Creek Unit Three is located approximately 1,000 feet north of Gerber Road, west of and adjacent to Elk Grove Florin Road, and proposes 60 single-family parcels, a detention basin, and a park parcel. The Villages at Elder Creek Unit Two subdivision is located approximately 2,000 feet north of Gerber Road, east of and adjacent to Elk Grove Florin Road, and proposes 42 single-family parcels. During the entitlement process, these projects were conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated Sacramento County. And as a result, the project proponents submitted applications to initiate the benefit category change process, and in response to these requests, ballots and notices were mailed to the property owners on February 23. Currently, Gerber Creek Unit Two is a single existing parcel in the safety light-only benefit category and is assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light residential category with a service charge of $59.52 per single-family parcel, or $2,976 annually for the entire project. Gerber Creek Unit Three is currently two existing parcels in the safety light-only benefit category, each assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light residential category for the 60 single-family parcels and detention basin, and the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category for the park parcel, for a total of $3,919 for the entire project. Villages at Elder Creek Unit Two is currently one existing parcel in the safety light-only category assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light residential category with a service charge of $59.52 per parcel, or $2,499.84 annually for the entire project. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballots.
Thank you. Seeing no board punching in, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Would the clerk please tabulate the votes?
Yes, so I have three ballots. We have one ballot from the legal owner of DRP California 7 LLC, parcel number 0650080001, and the site address is 7411 Elk Grove Florin Road, Sacramento, California. They are in favor. I'm going to get these open first. All right, so for the other two ballots, same legal owner for parcel number 0650070027, site address 744 Gardner Avenue, Sacramento, California, and they are in favor. And then the final ballot is also the same legal owner, and the parcel numbers are 0650070022 and 059, and the site address is 7504 Elk Grove Florin Road, and they are in favor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Joe?
Yes, and so now I need to read in some fill-ins for the resolutions, and they're the same fill-ins for all three resolutions, so I'm just going to read them once, if that's okay. So in Section Two, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section Three, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, is there a motion? Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item 36?
Item 36 is County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number Three, Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Villages at Elder Creek Unit Two Subdivision, Gerber Creek Unit Two Subdivision, and Gerber Creek Unit Three Subdivision.
Good morning, Joe Grassick, here to present this one also. So this item establishes CSA 10 service charges on the same three projects you just heard about, so I will forego describing their location in detail again to save some time. In response to conditions of approval for these projects, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of CSA 10 service charges. CSA 10 provides trip reduction services. And in response to that request, notices and ballots were mailed to the property owners on February 23. And as a reminder, Gerber Creek Unit Two proposes 50 single-family lots, Gerber Creek Unit Three proposes 60, and the Villages at Elder Creek Unit Two proposes 42. And this item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $126.88 per single-family residential lot for each of the three projects. So if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballots.
You're getting pretty good at this, Joe.
Almost have it memorized.
Any questions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the, of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time?
We do not have any public comments.
Hearing and seeing none, close the public hearing. Please tabulate the votes.
Thank you. Okay, so I have three ballots. Let me just get them all out. Okay, legal owner, DRP California 7 LLC, and this is for parcel number 0650070022 and 059. 022 is located at 7504 Elk Grove Florin Road, 059 is also located on Elk Grove Florin Road, and they are in favor. Same owner for parcel number 0650070027, site address 7444 Gardner Avenue, and they are in favor. And the final ballot, same legal owner, 0650080001, and the site address is 7411 Elk Grove Florin Road, and they are in favor.
Thank you. Joe?
Great. And so this one also has read-ins for, fill-ins for the resolution, and again, there, all three resolutions are the same, so I'm only going to read them once. So in Section Two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. In Section Three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition.
Okay. Any questions with the board? Is there a motion?
I submit.
Motion and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 37?
Item 37 is the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Fiscal Year Technology Improvement Plan for Review and Approval.
Good morning, Supervisors. Rami Zachariah, Chief Information Officer. Every year, the Department of Technology works with the county department to assess the needs for the critical information systems. The results of these assessments are presented today in the Technology Improvement Plan. The five-year estimated technology improvement plan cost is $54,130,723. Prior year cost allocated to these projects was $21,232,798, totaling $75,363,521. I'm joined today by several D-Tech staff who play very significant roles on these projects, and I would like to take a minute to recognize them. Reddy Guram, IT Division- to take a minute to recognize them. Reddy Guram, IT Division Chief with the Department of Technology, Karina Zollers, IT Division Chief, Venny Reddy, IT Manager, Kevin Bell, IT Manager, Hema Madnu, IT Project Manager with the Department of Technology, Ryan McLean, Project Manager, and Tony Younger, Project Manager. Today, we are planning to highlight the property tax system, so we'll save that update to the end of the presentation. The first project that I'm going to talk about today is the Board Supervisors Constituent Tracking System. This project aims to implement a system that standardizes response to constituent inquiries. Indiegov, a leading software vendor in this space, was selected for this project. Staff training was completed in the last few weeks, and the project just went live. Tony Younger, our project management for this project, is working with your staff to collect issues and report them to Indiegov and working on resolution for those issues. The Department of Personnel Services is implementing a case management system to increase efficiency, improve customer communication, and provide data analytics. This system will address all aspects of the employee relationship. Third, the California Mental Health Services Authority has brought together 23 California counties to participate in a semi-statewide electronic health record system. The first phase of this project was implemented in July of 2023. The second phase will be in, for inpatient, and is scheduled for July of this year. The Sacramento County Social Health Information Exchange will serve low-income communities through the development of county-wide data infrastructure that links medical, behavioral health, social health, and housing data from multiple sources. It will enable care coordination and support health equity by allowing providers to identify and serve low-income communities. The RFP for this project was just completed, and a vendor has been selected. Technology Improvement Plan projects that were recently completed are the Human Assistance Welfare Case Management System, CASOS, Mental Health Crisis Call Center Response System, and Microsoft Office 365. With that said, I would like to invite Ryan McLean to come down and give us a status update on the tax system. Chad Rindi, Director of Finance, and I are also here to answer any questions that you may have. Ryan?
These things work. All right, thank you, Rami. My name's Ryan McLean, and as the project manager, it's my pleasure to share with you the current status of our property tax system replacement project. A little background. Property taxes are an important source of revenue for the county, school districts, cities, and school districts. With the county collecting and managing around $2.7 billion last fiscal year, it is a vital and important part of our county's responsibilities. The goal of the project is to ensure that we continue to manage the complexity of property taxes efficiently and with great accuracy, which is why our existing system, designed in 1980, consisting of over 9,000 separate programs and 25 ancillary systems, is ready to be replaced. The project is currently on target to improve nearly every aspect of the existing property tax system, areas, of course, such as security, reporting, error reduction, constituent interaction, and efficiency. Implementation of our new property tax system, Taxus, by Grant Street, is a multi-year effort and does include annual ongoing costs. I am very happy to say that we are currently experiencing no major issues. We are on time, and we are within budget. Implementation started in April of 2023, and we are on track to go live in September of 2025, about one year into the project. To help, help measure our success, we've broken the project into 16 major project milestones, each milestone representing a significant accomplishment or a step forward in the project. Six out of 16 of these milestones are now complete. Second major part of the project has to do with data. As you can imagine, the amount and complexity of 10-plus years of property tax bills and data needing to move into the new system is not an easy task. To help ensure accuracy within the data migration, outside of the automated tests and monthly data extracts to the vendor, we also have six in-person data verifications where we are utilizing our own county property tax experts to verify the data. We have completed two data verifications thus far, and both were considered a success. And I thought it was kind of fun. I like statistics a bit, and so I can kind of show a little bit of some of the effort we have. Over 400 meetings have taken place in that timeframe. We've had three, over 3,800 online questions answered or online discussions through a ticket system completed. Our vendor has traveled here over 10 times, and they've completed over 1,500 pages of notes. That's just in our first year, so got about a year and a half to go. Okay, budget. If you take a look at the project on a timeline or on a calendar, so from April 2023 to September 2025, and we will be going live, we're 40% complete, and within that 40% amount of time, we have spent a total of 25.4% of the budget, which equates to around $12 million of the $48 million currently allocated to the project. The budget does cover costs through the '27-'28 fiscal year, so it is a little bit extended past that go-live date. Knowing that we will see a planned increase in spending in the final phases of this project, the existing percent difference that you see here is exactly where we want to be, as that gap is going to continue to shrink as we get closer and closer to go-live. All right, and before we move into questions, I really did want to take this opportunity to recognize those responsible for the current progress and the future success of this project. The main project team, you can see a picture on the screen here, that is a combination of both the vendor, so Grant Street Group, as well as county staff that have been a part of it. There are 42 people currently on the project team, and spread across finance, which includes our tax collector, auditor, and treasury groups, as well as the assessor and the Department of Technology. And that number does not include any of our auxiliary teams involved or those other, others that have just been working on various parts of the project. As you can imagine, the ripple effects, it touches quite a few different areas within the county. I'm very excited to continue working with such a great project team. I love the dedication and willingness. I really think everyone is on board and doing a fantastic job as we continue to move forward to the main goal, which is, of course, improving and successfully implementing our county's new property tax system. And so with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you may have. Rami, who just introduced my, who just introduced me earlier, will have Karina Zollers, our IT Division Chief, Department of Technology, and Chad Rindi, Director of Finance, will also be here and available, of course, to help answer any questions that you guys might have.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So, just one question. When this project is complete in 2025, will the county be officially COBOL-free?
Question.
I think we will be close. We are still, so, but we're making good progress. So, in the last year, the Sheriff Department, they got off the mainframe and the COBOL programs for the jail inmates management system. But today, still, the court's still working on the court criminal case management system, and I believe that their timeline is somewhere around the same timeline as tax. So, we are hopeful.
I still remain paranoid that there's some far distant corner of the county where someone's using punch cards, so.
It's possible, but we're working on it. We're hoping that this will be done soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, David.
Just real quick, I want to thank Ryan and Rami for bringing this forward. Also thank the board, as you saw up there, that this current tax system was built in 1980, as Supervisor Serna joked about the COBOL programming. It's a little harder to find COBOL programmers coming out of the local colleges nowadays, but you've made a significant investment of almost $50 million to replace that. That's no small task, and I appreciate your support for this, and congratulate Ryan. I, I asked him about six months ago to come give you an update, and I appreciate him coming in today and giving that update, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Are there more presenters? No, that's it. Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. All right, then, with that, we, is there a motion to approve? Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Okay, for item 38, this is your Fiscal Year 2024-25 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, New and Newly Funded Projects Review and Referral to the County Planning Commission for Project Consistency with the General Plan.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and Board of Supervisors. I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. I'm here to present the new and newly funded capital improvement plan projects for fiscal year 2425 through fiscal year 2829. The request for this item is to review the projects and direct the county executive to forward the projects to the Planning Commission for review as to the consistency with the general plan. To provide just a high-level overview of the projects, before you now, you'll see two sizable projects within the Department of Water Resources Drainage that are shown, that show as new this year with significant funding in the prior year's column. This is a result of canceling a prior project and creating two distinct projects for the purpose of tracking the future phases by the actual phases of the project. For county buildings and capital construction, the largest project is for the RCCC to replace the HVAC units with chilled water, hot water HVAC system to comply with regulatory requirements. For the Department of Transportation, the majority of new projects are this year's overlay projects. At this time, staff is requesting the approval of the item so that the projects may be forwarded to the Planning Commission to review their consistency with the general plan. The full CIP will come back to the board in June along with the budget. I welcome any questions, and each department has representatives available to answer any questions you may have to specific department projects. Thank you.
Any questions at this time from the board? Seeing and hearing none, is there any public comment on this?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Is there a motion?
We'll give it to Frost in a second.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Colin.
Right on time for item 39, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program Update.
Just add a little bit. All right. Good morning, Housing Authority Board. My name is Mark Hamilton. I am the Director of the Agency's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, or simply known as the RAD program. I'll be providing you with an update of our public housing rehabilitation and conversion process under that program. Next slide here. There we go. So, just start with a really quick review of the RAD program. The Rental Assistance Demonstration Program is actually a Department of Housing and Urban Development program. It was implemented by, implemented in 2012 by Congress. It was designed to provide an opportunity for public housing programs to convert their existing public housing programs over to the project-based Section Eight program. On the resident side, there are tremendous benefits to utilizing the RAD program for conversion activities. The first of which is that all units remain affordable to the residents. The rent is still based off of 30% of the adjusted monthly income for the family, and if during the conversion process, a resident's rent is calculated as higher, that is staggered over a period of three years to allow for a resident to adjust to the higher rent. Residents who are in good standing preserve their right to return back to the development post-rehab. They are not subject to a rescreening of any kind. Moving to project-based vouchers also provides an opportunity to receive tenant-based vouchers, subject to funding availability, 12 months after conversion if residents choose to pursue one, and subject to the PHA's availability of vouchers. Resident participation funding is maintained throughout the conversion, so there is a, that chief funding source for the resident advisory board continues even through the RAD conversion. And because of the use of low-income housing tax credits, there are also enhanced resident services that are provided to the tenants at no additional charge. This may include after-school services or ongoing senior support. Side here. So, next slide here, you can see our progress on the RAD program through the previous five years, going from 2019 through 2024, where we kind of kicked things off with our RAD pilot project, which covered properties in both the city and the county's jurisdictions. This was a scatter site project, 124 units, six sites. And we completed that project in July of 2021, and we've made somewhat steady progress, where we've tried to have a project in pre-development or development with every subsequent year in this time period here. We have been focusing a lot on the city properties with the Central City One and the RVP Group project, but we are now diving into the Auburn Falls project, which are five county properties that we are looking to convert under RAD. Let me see here. So, this is a multifamily project as part of our Sun River Public Housing Asset Management project, or AMP. This project is a five-site scatter site project consisting of 104 units located in the county and within the city of Citrus Heights. We will be performing an extensive scope of work that includes brand-new finishes in all of the living spaces, including bedrooms, kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. We'll be upgrading the exteriors of the buildings, as well as building out community spaces at these properties that will allow for resident services to be delivered to the tenants. Properties in these amps were identified as a high need, current limited, with current limited rehab resources, and having the significant property value to engage with the RAD process. We have had several meetings with the residents, with the property management team, and with the resident advisory board. To the next. So, this slide shows our current development slate and what we're looking to kind of pursue under the RAD program. As you can see, we do have several, all of these projects are within the county, so we'll be continuing with our Sun River properties in Sun River Two and Three. With those names, more than likely be changed when we are kind of developing the projects out. Rio Garden and Point Lagoon, all of these amps are within the county Housing Authority's jurisdiction. Then, just want to show off a little bit. So, this is Capital Terrace. This is part of our Central City One project. This is the building post-construction here. Some of the upgrades that we've performed to the finishes within the unit, so you can see the upgraded flooring, the cabinetry, the new appliances, the brand-new bathroom, and the common area that we set up for the tenants here, and this serves as a community space and a resident services location for the building. And this is our other property that's tied into that Central City One project. This is Edgewater at 626 I Street. This is post-construction in the units, post-construction in the common area. And then this is RVP Group, which does include the 600 I Street building, of which this board was formerly the general partner entity before we moved it through the conversion. So, as you can see, we do have a fairly long slate here of items that we are looking to upgrade. That's a current picture of the building at 600 I Street. This is what the building will look like after it's done. I don't know if, and if you've driven past 600 I Street, but a lot of the scaffolding is down, so you will be able to see the, kind of the noticeable differences in how the building looks. This is 25168 Street, otherwise known as Big Trees. We'll be tackling this property starting in June of this year, and this is what the building will look like post-construction. And then, this is 91738 Street, which is Pine Knoll. This is pre-construction, and this is the work post-construction. Here, here's the new community room. It's a brand-new furniture, brand-new finishes, brand-new kitchen space that we've kind of built into this area here, and then this is a unit interior. So, complete rehab to the kitchen, full rehab to the unit interiors. And these are the upcoming projects that we're working on. So, Sun River One is Auburn Falls. This is the property that we're currently working on. And then we have another Sun River project, also in the county, that we're looking to jump right into next, starting with pre-development next year. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And this is a great program to ensure we can update some of these properties, add new amenities, and still make sure can update some of these properties, add new amenities, and still make sure they remain in our inventory of affordable housing in Sacramento County. But I just want to be make sure I understand. So, this is, is this the conversion to project-based? This is not adding any additional inventory for properties that are eligible for vouchers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so let's make sure of that. And then, so what is the, you know, I see in the staff report, the amount of money from the federal government. What is the, and it talks about the need nationwide, 444, 440,000 units nationwide. What is the need in Sacramento County, and what does the future hold for this future funding for this program?
So, what we've kind of seen as we've done physical needs assessments for our properties to kind of determine what rehab is needed, it far exceeds what's available.
Sure.
Typically, on any given year, we get between $1 to $2 million in capital fund for us to kind of take a look at and attribute to these county properties. Scope of work for just this project alone is around $16 million. So, the need for Sacramento County far outweighs what we're getting on an annual basis from HUD.
And maybe LaChelle, I mean, in any sense, is there, is the federal government, do they want to continue funding this program, and can you give me a little sense of that?
Yes, so absolutely. This is one of the flagship programs that HUD has embarked on to upgrade public housing, and there is a cap in terms of the number of units that they will provide the funding like we're seeing for this particular program. We were fortunate in that we submitted our entire portfolio, and so we're within that particular cap that they have nationwide. One of the things that we are continually advocating is to lift that cap so that more housing authorities will be eligible for RAD funding, but we are, we're in under the wire, and so we're just methodically working through our entire inventory.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah. No, it's a difficult thing to prioritize, obviously, and I'm glad you're now going to be working on some of these projects in the unincorporated area where there's a huge need as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to kind of go back to the snapshot that you showed from the first five years and the projects that are in pipeline and that have been completed. And if I'm understanding this program correctly, it is the conversion and rehabilitation of public housing units into project-based voucher units.
Yes.
And so, to the point of the question that was just asked, it is not adding any more capacity or bringing any more units online, it's simply rehabbing, if you will.
Right. So, a lot of the properties that we've worked on so far, they were either at end of useful life or very close to it. And what we're doing with the RAD conversions is we're trying to get additional time for these properties through substantial rehab. So, every project, the way that we scope it is to make sure that we have at least 20 additional years of useful life for anything that we're, that the residents are utilizing to kind of live within these spaces.
And run me through that. I have a construction background. What do you mean by end of useful life?
So, everything, everything has like a kind of like a predetermined life, life expectancy, like how much use will you get out of like walls, or paint, or appliances, and things like that? And we use a third party who comes in and provides an estimate of kind of where we are kind of on that useful life timeline.
Sure.
And how close we are to that either being obsolete or us just being on borrowed time because we're far surpassed the life expectancy of that building material or that appliance.
Sure, got you. And so, is there anything in this program that is extending the availability of the units, clouding the title, et cetera, et cetera? In other words, one of the justifications for why affordable units are so expensive in the front is because you're buying the 30-year cloud of the title. Is anything baked into these costs relative to that?
Yeah, so, when we do these projects, one of the requirements that HUD has and that our internal department has is that we need to provide that full physical needs assessment. And part of what you do when you kind of build these projects out is that you're establishing a replacement reserve. So, even for those items that may kind of time out, you're building in funds into the project in order to improve or replace those capital components that, you know, may age out through the duration of the project. So, even though we're gearing for 20 years, we're still providing funding to cover, you know, any of these materials or appliances that may go out through the life of the project.
Okay. So, that's a, that's a replacement reserve, which is bought and paid for upfront?
Yes.
Because the...
So, there's two components to it. So, there's an initial deposit, and that's just, that's based off of like projections of what materials are in the project, and then there is an annual contribution based off of the dollars per unit that goes into the project every year.
So, there's both upfront and annual based off of revenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, why I'm asking these questions is because in looking at that table there, and I just did the quick calculation of taking the rehab cost and dividing it by the number of units, in the case of Central City, you're talking about $345,000 per unit, and in the case of RVP, it's $459,000 per unit. This is a refurbishment cost. Why is it so expensive when you already have the bones, if you will, of the buildings?
Sure. So, what you're seeing on this chart is the total development cost, not the, just the hard construction cost tied to doing the rehab. The construction cost is only a fraction of this total development cost. Total development costs include things like legal, the actual purchase and transfer of the property, and things like that, and all of those kind of add into the total development cost of things. So, for example, for RAD Pilot, I've kind of got this baked into my brain, but that construction cost was like, I think, 8.5 or $9 million. So, out of that $25.3 million budget, only about $9 million is actually attributable to the construction cost. And similar with Central City One, out of that $66.4 million, I believe it's around $20 or $25 million, so that $66.4 million is actually attributed to the hard construction cost. So, the amount of money that we're paying to the general contractor to perform the work.
And in that hard construction cost, do you include that replacement reserve?
Yes.
So, you're not making me feel any better? Because now you're telling me that a third of that money for the refurbishment of those 192 units is going to overhead administration, something other than the actual refurbishment of the units? What costs, I mean, you understand where I'm going with this?
I do.
This is incredibly expensive on a per-unit basis. What costs so much to do this?
Well, like I said, like with the total development cost, that also includes the purchase of the property itself. So, that's a portion of the total development budget that you see on here.
I thought this was already public housing.
But...
Yes, please.
Maybe I can, via assistance, Christine Wicker from SHRA. So, a little confusing today because Mark was giving the overview workshop and just informational item. The next item on your agenda, I think in number 40, we actually are holding the public hearing for the issue of the mortgage revenue bonds for Auburn Falls. But, so in your next staff report, Supervisor on Attachment Six, I believe, that's a, no, Eight, I'm sorry, it's very small print, there's a good summary of the construction and sources and uses for this particular phase. And as you can see, the construction cost is actually about $152,000 a unit, and that's significant, but there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance on these units. Some are actually boarded and vacant because they're not occupiable, so that's the work that needs to be done. But you can see, a lot of it has to do with the acquisition, which is not really, it's not, it is changing hands, it's changing hands from the Housing Authority to the nonprofit entity, Sharp, that will own this, but it's not dollars. Does that make any sense? There'll be seller carrybacks and things like that. So, you have to include that because all of that, those costs, even the, you know, the transition of the property and improvement makes you eligible to get more bonds and tax credits, so it's all included. Hope that makes some sense.
It does make more sense, and we have other items on the agenda this morning, so I don't want to belabor the point too much. I think I've made the initial point I'm making, which is, this is incredibly expensive, and it just doesn't seem on the face of it. It does make a lot of sense, and so I would like to maybe suggest that we have a workshop on voucher programs and on these types of acquisitions and refurbishments, and so maybe we can do that, and in the development of the agenda for that workshop, we can include county staff because they may have questions as well on the sources and uses and how these programs are funded and how to leverage other funds, so can we maybe put something like that together? Would that be okay?
Yes, Supervisor, we can, we can definitely work with SHRA, I'm assuming.
Okay.
And LaChelle's shaking her head yes, too, also.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that? As part of that discussion, I would like to flesh out a little bit about how this does impact the vouchers, because I, my understanding is, we have a finite amount of vouchers in Sacramento County. If these are all being converted to project-based vouchers, does that mean we have less vouchers available now? Does that make sense, that question?
Yeah, no, it doesn't negatively impact or add to the burden of the Housing Authority. What HUD does for the RAD process is that they will grant these RAD project-based vouchers as part of the conversion.
Those will be additional vouchers available to us, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Might I make a suggestion that if there's specific questions that board members have, and I know I do, I think it's a great idea, Supervisor Hume, that we get that to David as they develop the agenda so that we can really, I think it's long overdue that we have this discussion, so thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that is a receive and file. Next item.
Next item, you're still acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is for the Auburn Falls project. You're going to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, authorize bond issuance, authorize a conditional loan commitment for a seller carryback loan and cash proceeds note, and an option agreement with Sacramento Housing Authority repositioning program or related entity.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, public hearing, approval of bond issuance, and commitment of seller carryback and cash proceeds loans. As you just heard in Mark Hamilton's presentation, Auburn Falls project is in the fourth conversion through the RAD program of the Housing Authority's public housing portfolio to project-based vouchers. This project will rehabilitate 104 units across five scattered sites located in the County of Sacramento and the city of Citrus Heights. These one, twos, and three bedrooms will be affordable to households earning between 40 and 60% of area median income. Sacramento Housing Authority repositioning program, or Sharp, is the developer of the project. The property management will continue under the Housing Authority. Resident services will be provided by Health Education Council. A minimum of 20 hours of resident services will be provided each week, including 14 hours of after-school programming. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the TFR resolution, approval to issue the revenue bonds, and authority to provide a loan commitment for seller carryback and cash proceeds loans for the Auburn Falls project. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize if you're not the correct person to direct this question, but on the attachment that Christine just called my attention to, in one of the uses, there's a almost $6.9 million developer fee. To whom is that being paid?
That will be paid to the developer, Sharp.
Who will eventually...
But deferred, but it will be deferred. $829,000 will be deferred.
Sure, so, okay, so let's call it $6 million even. Will be paid to Sharp to do what? Which attachment are we on? We're on Attachment Eight. Thank you. I was looking at the wrong one.
It's a little confusing, but I apologize, but the developer fee, as Whitney said, is almost $6.9 million. However, the developer will be contributing that. If you see sort of two-thirds down the list of sources, it talks about general partner contribution, they're contributing $3.4 million of that backs the project. So, so, you know, 6.9 less, 3.4, plus they're deferring about $800,000. Am I reading that right? Yeah, $800,000. So, they are contributing that, they will not, the net will be much lower, it'll just be a couple million dollars, I believe, that they'll actually receive. And that's to cover not only staff costs, I mean, primarily staff costs that it took to get the project here. It's a lot of work to do a bond and tax credit project, and a lot of third-party reports have to be submitted to the state, and you have to cover all those costs. But, it's all there is for ongoing costs to sort of oversee the project, and it also, we considered another contingency. So, there is a contingency for construction built into this budget, but if you exceed that construction contingency, we look to the developer to contribute more of their developer fee to the project, so it serves many uses.
Okay, and I apologize, I hadn't dug into this when we had our briefing, or I would have asked these questions offline, and I'm not necessarily picking apart this particular deal, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the whole way around. And so, we are taking public housing, and we are paying to refurbish it, and we are giving it to the nonprofit operator.
Correct.
And in addition to then transferring this asset to them, we are paying them a developer fee on top of that.
A small portion exclude, as Christine just mentioned, the developer fee minus the contribution that they're putting into the project and the deferred developer fee.
Yep, so it's still about $2.6 million.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's just one other thing, if it's okay.
Of course.
Supervisor Hume, I wanted to mention. Sharp is the nonprofit entity that is essentially the Housing Authority, and so the additional funds that we receive from developer fee above and beyond after all expenses are taken, then go back into the general pot, and then that is used for the other projects that we have that are in the pipeline. So, it creates a source that we can take and reuse and then bring forward other projects that we can renovate within our RAD program. And so, that's, that's a part of the whole strategy that we put in place. And we did come forward with our asset repositioning strategy to both the, to the county board as well as the city for those properties, and kind of outlined this whole process. So, I think what might be very helpful is for us, when we come back in that workshop, is an updating of the asset repositioning plan so that then we can kind of go back and kind of see exactly what were our guiding principles and what we were trying to achieve, and then lay the whole process out. So, if that works for you, we'd be happy to set it up that way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Is there a motion? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Item 41, please.
Item 41, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Terracina at Wildhawk project. Conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, authorize bond issuance, and authorize conditional loan commitment with USA Properties Fund or related entity in the amount of $9.2 million. Am I on the right item?
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Marissa Kersey, Housing Finance Analyst in the Development Department for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The Terracina at Wildhawk project is requesting a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, public hearing, approval of a bond issuance, and a $9.2 million loan commitment for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the project. Terracina at Wildhawk is a new construction project located on a 6.9 acre lot at 9756 Gerber Road. The project will consist of six three-story buildings and one two-story clubhouse. There will be 145 one, two, and three-bedroom units affordable to households who earn between 30 and 70% of the area median income. Some of the amenities on site will include a two-story clubhouse, recreation center, swimming pool, playground, sports court, dog park, and 270 parking spaces. The project is proposed to be funded with bonds, 4% tax credits, SHRA loans, a deferred developer fee, fee waivers, solar credits, and income during construction. USA Properties will serve as a developer of the project. They have ample experience developing affordable housing, including several projects here in Sacramento. Property management will be provided by USA Property Multifamily Management, and resident services will be provided by Life Steps. Services will include six hours of adult education classes, eight hours of after-school programming, and six hours of service... after-school programming, and six hours of service coordination for a total of 20 hours per week. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the TFR resolution, approval to issue the revenue bonds, and authorization to provide a loan commitment for 9.2 million for the Terracina at Wildhawk Project. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions with the board? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay. Then bring it back to the board, and I will move staff recommendation and say thank you to staff and to the developer. This is a great project. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Hold it open for there a second.
I will.
Okay.
Unanimous vote.
42.
Yes. Item 42, this is the Sacramento International Airport Terminal B Parking Garage Project, award of design-build lump sum contract for design-build services to Auto Construction.
All right, guys. Good morning, Supervisors. TJ Chen, Deputy Director for Planning and Development with Department of Airports. I have the pleasure today to present to you another major milestone achieved by staff on Sacramento International Airport's Capacity Enhancement Program, SMF Forward, specifically the Terminal B Parking Garage Project. As you are aware, additional closing parking is the most desirable improvement expressed by our customers or our stakeholders. When staff came to the board last July requesting to proceed with a procurement process using design-build delivery method for this project, staff identified the project's scope objectives shown here. We'd like to construct a six-story parking garage building, provide 4,500 to 5,500 parking spaces to meet projected demand, also to provide capacity for displaced parking from future consulting or rental car facility, and lastly, create flexibility for future energy efficiency and sustainable features such as solar panels or EV chargers. Due to need for more parking in the near term, and to get this project designed and constructed quickly, staff chose design-build delivery method for this project. The project is the county's first design-build project, and we are eager and excited to get started. Staff also identified the overall budget for this project to be $390 million with the cost-budget component listed here. We budgeted $265 million for construction, $40 million for contingency, $54 million for allowance for escalation, and $31 million for soft costs. Contingency, or more specifically owner's contingency identified here can be used for unforeseen conditions beyond the $5 million allowance included in the pricing proposal, and enhancements such as solar panels on the roof, additional chair panels and architectural enhancements, and other customer-oriented amenities. Although the construction price has stabilized in the past year, there are still high-level uncertainties in the supply chain for construction materials and shipping, transportation, and labor costs. Thus, a higher amount of allowance for escalation is needed for this project, as the department intends to complete this project as quickly as we can. Per board's prior approval, staff used a two-step competitive design-build procurement process as required by Public Contracting Code, Section 22164, to select a design-build entity to design and construct this project. The requirement for the two-step process are identified on this slide. To summarize, step one is RFQ process to shortlist three design-build entities, and the shortlisted firms are Hansel Phillips Construction, McCarthy Building Companies, and Auto Construction. Step two is RP process using the best value selection process, which takes into account both technical design and pricing proposal as a selection criteria. Once the procurement process started, staff followed the prescribed milestones to ensure projects stay on track. The milestones are listed on this slide. I do want to highlight the three confidential meetings and the oral presentation held with each shortlisted design-build entities. Additionally, the Notice of Intentional War, or NOI, was issued on March 8. However, the staff issued a revised Notice of Intentional War on March 15 to correct inconsistency in the presentation of the scores and pricing information. Final ranking of the design-build entities remain unchanged. All right. For here, please bear with me. We're going to do a little math exercise to share with you how we select the best value. Again, this table summarizes the outcome of the two-step competitive design-build procurement process. Again, step one is RFQ process, and score for the RFQ process are listed in column A to the left of this table. Best value derived from RP process, which is step two, and based on total proposal points and total bid price. Total proposal points are listed on column B. It's based on each design entity's technical proposal, information provided at each of the three confidential meetings, and the final oral presentation. As you can see here, the point spread among the three design-build entities is just 12 points out of 315 possible technical points. After the three confidential meetings, the final oral presentations, and reviewing the technical proposals, staff strongly believe that all three design-build entities provided a sound design for the project, and staff could work effectively and successfully with all three design-build entities to deliver this project. Thus, the selection of the project design entity would come down to the pricing proposal. Total price of the pricing proposal is listed in column E, which is the sum of lump sum base price, column C, and alternatives, column D. The adjusted score, column F, is calculated by dividing the total price by the total proposal points, or column E divided by column B. Hopefully, you'll follow that.
So, through the chair.
Yes.
So in other words, we're looking at a golf score here, not a football score, right?
Yeah. Sure. The lowest adjusted score represents the best value to the county. Auto Construction proposal had the lowest adjusted score, thus ranked number one for this project. As I mentioned earlier, the adjusted score in the initial Notice of Intentional War was erroneously calculated based only on the lump sum base price. The revised Notice of Intentional War included the correctly calculated adjusted score, which includes both the lump sum base price and alternatives. The final ranking in both initial and revised Notice of Intentional War remain unchanged. Staff also tasked the department's executive program management team and Supervisor to conduct a pricing proposal analysis. So I would like to share this on the projector if I can. Can zoom in a little bit. So this is our effort to analyze the pricing proposals submitted by all three firms. If you can zoom in just a little bit more. It shows the autos pricing, McCarthy's pricing, pricing proposals, and Hansel Phillips. We pay a lot of attention on the two lowest proposal firms, pricing proposal. As you can see in the highlighted line item toward the bottom called Name of the Right Cost of Work. It's in yellow. If you can zoom a little bit further. The variance among the two firms is only 3.64%. From that, we determined the pricings are really close, obviously, and these are good prices for the project, for $229 million project. And the price, the direct cost of work, the pricing variance is only 3.74%. The biggest variance among these two firms came from their design costs, and we call overhead soft costs, builders' general condition costs, markups, fees, and direct cost of work. As you can see on the light green column, the variance is between 30 and 46% among these two firms. Any questions regarding this analysis before I move on to resume my presentation?
None at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Let's do my switch back. Thank you. There are two board approved items related to Terminal B Parking Garage Project, the CWTA or Community Workforce and Training Agreement, and SMF Forward, our program. I am glad to report that the CWTA has been executed by the Director of Airports, Sacramento Sierra's Building and Construction Trades Council, and local unions are part of the trades council. The department is in discussion with Northern California Carpenter's Union on the CWTA, and the department had just released the solicitation for artists for this project and the airport's Terminal Concord Speed Position Walkway Project. That's also part of SMF Forward program. Specific projects SAS recommended board action today are identified here. Just to summarize, the staff is requesting Supervisor approval to award the contract to Auto Construction, authorize the director to execute the contract for this project with a total compensation just up, just over $229 million, set aside $40 million for owner's contingency, set aside $54 million for allowance for escalation, and authorize the director of airport to execute contract amendments, change orders, and other contract modifications up to the combined total of the owner's contingency and the allowance for escalation. And lastly, we certainly will continue to provide quarterly updates on SMF Forward, including this project. Before I take your questions, I would like to recognize Ms. Allison Otto, President CEO of Auto Construction. She's in the room, sitting right behind me, to the left, to my left, who would like to share a few comments on this project and the recommendation of their selection as the design-build entity for this project. Thank you. I'd like to also take a moment to share a few rendering provided by Auto Construction on the future Terminal B Parking Garage Project. If you look on the screen, on your screen, the render upper left is the rendering of the parking garage on the left. This is an aerial shot looking to the north toward the terminal building. The new garage on the left to the Terminal B, and the existing garage is to the right of Terminal B. Upper right rendering is another rendering of the parking garage looking from the air, looking to the northwest. And lower left, similar perspective, but looking from the ground, from the landscaping area in front of Terminal B. And the lower right rendering is looking south toward Terminal B and the parking garage. This project is scheduled to start in October 2024, later this year, and projected completion date is May 2026. Here's another rendering provided by Auto Construction, and it's a layout of the proposed parking garage. Terminal B is just below this rendering and north to the right, just to orient all of you. And lastly, here's the rendering of what the garage would look like as you approach Terminal B and the garage. And if a board allows, I would like to ask Allison Otto of Auto Construction to step forward and speak about the recommendation of their selection as a design-build entity for this project. Allison?
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, TJ. Cindy as well, and as the Board of Supervisors, too. I am Allison Otto. I am President and CEO of Auto Construction. We were founded right here in Sacramento County in 1947, so we've been around quite a long time. I have the honor of running our third-generation women-owned family business, and thank you for having me here today. It is with great excitement that we are here for the award of the Terminal B Parking Garage. Our first project at the airport goes back to 1989. Since then, we were part of the Terminal A Parking Garage. We've been part of the big build, and also a lot of renovations to the airport, most recently at Terminal A. We are excited to be back at our home airport and be part of SMF Forward. We will also be in compliance with the CWTA, as working with PLAs is not new to us. I'm sure you're aware of the North Natomas Aquatic Center. There was a PLA on that project. There's also a PLA on our current project at Oak Ridge Elementary School, which is for Sacramento City Unified School District. We are a union contractor, and we're signatory to the laborers, cement masons, and carpenters. We, in particular, have a longstanding positive relationship with the carpenters' union. Auto Construction, together with our project partners, is looking forward to finishing the design and, of course, starting the construction on the Terminal B Parking Garage. Our experience with the airport, executives, and staff so far has been excellent, and we are looking forward to furthering our partnership on this much-needed amenity to further enhance the customer experience at SMF.
Thank you.
Not ready for your questions.
Any questions from the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have public comments for this item. Richard Marcusson?
Good morning, board members. Richard Marcusson for the Western Electrical Contractors Association. First, let me start by congratulating a Sacramento-based, women-owned contractor for being awarded the design-build contract. I think that's awesome. I think it's a great thing for the county and for the local contractor base here. That said, I have to express my ongoing disappointment with the majority of this board that voted for the project labor agreement on the project. Not only this first initial, very important part of modernizing Sacramento International, we all know how desperately we need additional parking there, but the decision of the majority to virtually close the door to 85% of the non-union construction workforce, the more than 1,000 apprentices in weak apprenticeship program, the journey workers that, if they are permitted, who are non-signatory, are permitted to work on the project, will lose pension contributions, and the contractor will be forced to pay into the union health and welfare program, double payments in essence, or the worker will be forced to drop their existing coverage and move to a new plan. Now, you made this decision, obviously, out of some commitment to the organized labor movement here in Sacramento, and for any number of different justifications for doing that. But don't fool yourself. This is not about local hire, even though a local contractor who is signatory with major construction unions will be doing a portion of the work. Your decision to throw fair and open competition out the window and award a no-bid sole-source contract for construction labor to the local building trades is frustrating, and it's very disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments for this item.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to gladly move the item, and I want to thank TJ and Cindy and all of our airport staff that are part of the team for SMF Forward, and certainly folks that are going to help us with our public art, which is going to be, I think, a noted centerpiece of the project. And I'm just very proud of the process thus far, and just, you know, really looking forward to groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings. And ultimately, as was mentioned, making sure that the customer experience, traveling public experience is even a better time using our airport, one that is already award-winning. So with that, I again happily move the item.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, I want to echo my colleagues' comments and Cindy and TJ. The process just continues to really impress me. There's more transparency and thoughtfulness going into this very complicated construction project than I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of them. So thank you very much. Well done. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item 43.
Item 43 is the Laguna Ranch, Laguna Creek Ranch, Elliott Ranch Community Facilities, District Number One, Improvement Areas Numbers One and Two, Authorization to Use Funds for the Alternative Flood Control Project, and Approve the Appropriation Adjustment Request.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name
My name is Claudia Wade, County Engineer, and we'll be presenting today's item along with Amitash Tandy with the Department of Water Resources. Today, we'll be discussing the Laguna Creek-Elliott Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Funds for Alternative Flood Control Project. Today, staff will be requesting that the board adopt a resolution approving funds for Laguna Creek Ranch-Elliott Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Improvement Areas Number One and Two, originally earmarked for certain Lambert Road improvements in the amount of $3.4 million, and applicable interest to be used for an alternative flood control project. We'll also ask that the board authorize the Director of the Department of Water Resources to enter into an agreement with the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Reclamation District Number 2110 to utilize said funds for the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Weir Project for the county's local cost-share contribution. Amitash Tandy with DWR will be providing the background on this item.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Amitash Tandy, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Water Resources. Today, I'll provide a brief background of the Laguna Creek Ranch and Elliott Ranch Development Projects. We have Mike Kinet here with MBK Engineers who'll provide details about the alternative project, so we'll get right into it. In November, on November 8th, 1989, the board adopted the EIR for the Laguna Creek Ranch and Elliott Ranch Development Projects, which are located now in the city of Elk Grove. At the time, the construction of levees was required for the project, and to aid with existing flood storage, the development projects proposed at the time to raise the Lambert Road Bridge. The Lambert Road improvements were included in the Laguna Creek Ranch-Elliott Ranch CFD Number One. In the late 1990s, after analysis was performed, the Lambert Road Bridge project was deemed infeasible. County DWR considered alternative projects, and at the time was determined that funds from the CFD for Lambert Road could be used for alternative projects, and this was done, this was an opinion at the time of bond council. In 2018, California DWR proposed an alternative project, which is called the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Weir Project. So here's a map highlighting the Laguna Creek Ranch and Elliott Ranch Developments in Elk Grove, the Point Pleasant area. Just to the west of that is the Lambert Road Bridge, and to the south of that is the proposed McCormick-Williamsen Tract Weir Project. Again, like I stated, Mike Kinet is here today to provide details regarding the project.
Thank you. I'm with MBK Engineers. We're the district engineer for Reclamation District Number 2110, which is McCormick-Williamsen Tract. That's shown in pink on your map. McCormick-Williamsen Tract is in the North Delta at an important place. It's at the confluence of the Casumnes and McCallmy rivers, as well as an area that's slightly higher in elevation as it's on the northeastern end of the delta. In 2023, its levees were breached, and it's been inundated since. However, we're still implementing a floodplain and habitat restoration project that has several important components for the region. Because of its location at the Casumnes and McCallmy River, it's a constriction in the flows, and the project aims to both improve floodplain as well as the historic tidal and marsh habitats in the region. The main components of the project that are shown on your map, highlighted in red on the east side, is the East Weir. This will allow the levee to be degraded and flood flows from the Casumnes River to outflow in the McCormick instead of the constricted portions of the McCallmy River. Additionally, we have a high-tide breach on McCallmy that allows the island to be flushed with occasional periods of high tide from the McCallmy River. The next important portion of that project is what we call Dead Horse Breach, which is also shown in red on the southwest corner of the island. That allows both tidal inundation for habitat purposes as well as for reliefs of flood flows through the district. The project is slated to be constructed later this year, and we're currently working to finalize designs. Thank you.
So the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Weir Project will mitigate the encroachment from the Laguna area levees. RD 2110 had an initial, an initial request of $5 million towards construction. We're proposing today to utilize the CFD Number One funds for approximately $3.4 million, and we propose to enter into an agreement with RD 2110.
So we're asking the board today to adopt a resolution approving the funds for Laguna Creek Ranch-Elliott Ranch Community CFD Number One Improvement Areas Number One and Two, originally earmarked for certain Lambert Road improvements in the amount of $3,444,767, and all applicable interest to be used for alternative flood control project, and approve appropriation adjustment request number 2024-2029 to release the funds reserved for the alternative project. Also, to authorize the Director of the Department of Water Resources to enter into an agreement with the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Reclamation District Number 2110 to utilize said funds for the McCormick-Williamsen Tract Weir Project for the county's local cost-share contribution. That concludes our presentation and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to make sure I understand the hydrology of what's at play here. And so the thinking is, is that by allowing this release valve at McCormick-Williamsen Tract, then that allows everything essentially downstream from the Lambert Road Bridge to flow out more easily so that it doesn't back up thereby preventing the water that's coming from the displaced area from backing up into Point Pleasant? Is that, in a nutshell, what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So McCormick was reclaimed later than many other North Delta districts in an area where, like I mentioned, Casumnes-Mcallmy come together, with the intent of building the East Weir. There's a number of hydraulic benefits. One is, yes, that release on allowing additional flow into the track through the East Weir as well as exiting at the Dead Horse Breach. The other local issue that's been, was a problem in '86 and '97, was the district had historically breached, filled with water, and then you'd have this bathtub effect of the downstream portion of the levee breaching as well, and you'd get a sudden rush of waters. We're hoping to prevent both those scenarios, one the rush of water and other being the back of the Casumnes River.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board? We have a public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
Let's see. Our first public comment is Walter Hoppy.
My name is Walter Hoppy. I live in Point Pleasant, which is in the Beach Stone Lake area. I am opposed to using Beach Stone Lake mitigation funds 105A and 105C for the McCormick-Williamsen Project for the following reasons. Funds 105A and 105C were collected as mitigation for lost floodplain storage when Laguna and Elliott Ranch Developments were approved by Sacramento County in the late 1980s. Initially, the funds were used to be used to elevate the depressed section of Lambert Road at the flood control structure. These funds sat unused for over 30 years. Sacramento County is obligated to spend these funds as mitigation for those developments. The proposed project does little at best and may actually have negative impact on the Beach Stone Lake area under some flood situations. The flood, the proposed project is to lower a section of the East Levee of McCormick-Williamsen Tract to create a third flow path between Franklin Pond and the Walnut Grove area. This clearly will lower water elevations in the Franklin Pond area and raise stages earlier in the downstream Walnut Grove area. When the flow to the Walnut Grove area exceeds the downstream flow capacity, the elevated stage flows north upstream over the Lambert Road flood control structure and increases the flood risk to the Beach Stone Lake area. The downstream flow capacity of the South and North Fork of the McCallmy River equals 40,000 CFS. Inflow from the Casumnes, McCallmy, and Morrison Creek exceed 120,000 CFS. The state had to do several model runs to find one that had some benefits for all related areas. They use different weir length and height and different hundred-year storm events to come up with data to support this project. The proposed project data shows the Franklin Pond area and the Walnut Grove area to receive greater benefits than the Beach Stone Lake area. They do not publish the model runs that had negative impact. Major storms are unpredictable and not likely to follow the one-model storm. Another concern is the model storm only had 55% of the volume of the observed 1986 storm, which created the worst flood event in the history of the Beach Stone Lake area. The downstream reclamation districts have spent tens of millions of dollars of public money to strengthen and elevate their levees for additional flood protection. The following charts show the money spent since 2006, some 39 million.
Can you begin to wrap up, Mr. Hoppy? Mr. Hoppy, can you begin to wrap up?
I just have a part of a sentence. This does not include the 3,000, yes, 3,000 truckloads of material placed on Tyler Island Levee in 2023. A better use of this mitigation fund would be to construct a functional flood control structure to replace the existing Lambert Road structure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we are all in receipt of your handouts. Thank you very much.
Okay, and next we have Tracy.
Good morning, Board and staff. My name is Tracy Slaven. I'm a resident of Point Pleasant. I've been there for 25 years. That pales in comparison to the, the experience that Bud, Walter Hoppy, has in that area, and I have benefited greatly from his, his teachings on what truly is important and the history of the hydrology in that area. I see this project as a way to, to utilize funds that have not been used for 30 years, but it is a way of siphoning off those funds and weaving with the remaining funds with no effort by the, the county to really address a remedy that benefits Beach Stone Lake. To me, this, this is just a infamous, infinitesimal small benefit to an area using considerable funds from that, the funds that were intentionally dedicated to fix the problem in Beach Stone Lake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
I guess this is a question for County Council. I'm not sure if you can answer it on the spot, but is there, is it true that the funds were collected for the specific purpose of mitigating the Beach Stone Lake and that they cannot be allocated differently, appropriated for different projects?
That is partially correct. I would say that the funds were mitigation for the development upstream, and we do have a bond council opinion that says that they can be used for other purposes, including the one at issue here, so we disagree with the statement made by Mr. Hoppy.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the item. I appreciate Walter and Tracy coming out here today, and I know, Bud, you've been at this for, I mean, literally, my predecessor had boxes of correspondence from you. But one of the reasons that the flood control structure at Lambert Road is designed the way that it is, is to prevent the water from backing back up and exacerbating the drainage out of the Beach Stone Lakes area. And so that's why I asked the question that I did, is to say that if you have a release valve downstream that allows the water to move out more quickly than that allows the water to move through and hopefully prevent that backing up. So I feel like staff is, is, I don't know why the raising of the bridge was deemed infeasible back in the day, but the fact that it is, it's better that we're spending this money on something that will hopefully have a positive effect, so.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. That ends our morning session. We will go into recess. We do have closed session with two items. Good afternoon. Welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, item 44 is the Brothers Market PCN. This is a request for a public convenience or necessity letter from the Board of Supervisors to issue a Type 21 Off-Sale Beer/Wine and Spirits Liquor License to Brothers Market at 4847 Amber Lane in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and Board members. Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to provide the staff presentation on the B Brothers Market PCN request. The property is located at 4847 Amber Lane. It's at the northwest corner of Amber Lane and College Oak Drive intersection in the Old Foothill Farms community. The request is for a PCN letter to support a Type 21, which is Off-Sale General Beer/Wine and Spirits Liquor License from the Alcohol Beverage Control State ABC for an existing convenience store. The applicant does already have a Type 20 license at the location, and they wish to surrender that license or sell it on the license market and move to a Type 21 if approved. Community context, it is a commercial area for the most part. The site is zoned GC, general commercial, and it is surrounded by retail commercial. This is a one-mile radius map that shows a variety of items. The census tracts are shown in red outline. The B Brothers Market is in the middle here, and then you can see existing Type 20 licenses in blue, Type 21 licenses in green, and then vacant parcels in pink, schools in blue, and the, a couple of daycare centers as well within this one-mile radius. So the PCN request did go to this Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC first in June of 2022, and at that meeting, the CPAC did vote to continue the item to their July meeting. The questions that were raised included whether the sheriff's conditions included a restriction on how the alcohol would be sold, so for instance, restrictions on single sales, and then how the hard alcohol would be stored and sold. There were concerns about the business location within a high crime and over-concentrated area, and then one written public comment in opposition was received. The continuation reasoning was to allow the applicant to provide additional information on licenses in the area that were in the census tract that had been issued since 2008, and then allowing them to follow up with the sheriff's office to see if they could get a letter of support, as the sheriffs had already issued a letter of conditional opposition. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC did meet again in July. The applicant team did come back with more information on licenses in the census tract, and they did have two public and they did have two public commenters in support, and so the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms did recommend approval of the PCN. So some project analysis, as required by Chapter 4 of the county code, the census tract has an overconcentration, about 200% overconcentration of liquor licenses. The subject parcel is identified as being in a high-crime district by the sheriff's office. They had noted that calls logged within two years for the site numbered 43. The subject property is within one mile of several uses that are considered sensitive uses in this context, and the subject parcel is located within the North Highlands Environmental Justice Community. The applicant for a PCN is required to provide a justification statement as to why this would be a public convenience or necessity, and that any potential nuisance or safety impacts would be addressed. The applicant did provide a justification statement saying that their customers had requested the addition of liquor at the site, and that it would be a convenience to those within the area to have the liquor sales in addition to beer and wine. After reviewing the requirements in Chapter 4, staff is recommending denial of this The census tract, as stated, is overconcentrated by 200% and is in an area with high crime rates. The PCN did receive a recommendation for approval by the CPAC. However, the conditional objection letter did remain from the sheriff's office. Review by staff indicates that the site is in a census tract that is heavily overconcentrated and in the vicinity of a number of sensitive uses and vacant land. While the applicant has stated that they plan on surrendering their license if issued a Type 21, this does not mean that they would cancel this license. The existing Type 20 license may stay in the census tract, and we have no way to bar that from happening, which would not assist with alleviating the existing overconcentration and high-crime issues in the area. Further, staff wishes to note the high number of calls for service logged by the sheriff's office at this site, including ones responding to violent crimes. Some of this may be due to the immediate area, and the applicant has stated that they have worked to make their property more clean and safe and have worked to try to alleviate some of the issues in the area, but it does remain a high volume of calls in the area. Staff believes that adding to the types of alcohol available and introducing hard liquor without having the ability to limit single sales, as we are not allowed to condition our PCN letters, would seem counterintuitive to addressing the crime issues on the site. Finally, the PCN request is located within the North Highlands Foothill Farms Environmental Justice Community and is not consistent with the environmental justice element in terms of regulating the number of liquor licenses in communities with existing overconcentrations of licenses. And so, as I had said, staff recommends denial of the request. We believe that the applicants have not demonstrated that the proposed sale of alcohol can be accomplished in a manner that sufficiently addresses or eliminates objections received or negative impacts identified, and that the applicants have not demonstrated that the public convenience or necessity of this liquor license outweighs the objections and the negative impacts identified. And that ends staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate all your work on this and staff's work, and I've had a lot of conversations with staff. I'm going to have more comments and questions after, I think, we hear some of the public comment. I believe the applicant is here as well, as well as some members of the community. But before we get to that, I did have a couple of questions. So you delved into it a little bit, this distinction between surrendering and canceling a license. What would the mechanism be if an applicant wanted to actually completely cancel their license to ensure that it doesn't pop up somewhere else in the census tract?
That's a good question. I would actually refer to the applicant's representative on that. That's a specific type of surrender or cancellation that they do with ABC. My understanding is effectively that it would eliminate that license from their marketplace, the license trading marketplace, but he could give you more information on that.
Okay. And hopefully you can speak to that when you come up here, sir. I mean, that's an important thing, obviously, and there is a difference between the two because we certainly would never want to see an additional proliferation of these in the same census tract. And then the other question is, in terms of sheriff conditions that they recommend, can you just briefly go over what those conditions would be? And I think the sheriff said that if these conditions could be imposed, they would change their recommendation. Is that accurate?
That is usually what the sheriff does provide us, yes. And so, the sheriff does have the opportunity to provide recommended conditions to ABC for putting on the liquor license. ABC representatives have told us that, you know, they will only accept conditions that they believe their ABC representatives can then regulate.
Of course.
And so, not everything that the sheriff asks for is included, but they do try to bring in what they feel like that they could bring onto the license reasonably. So the conditions that are included from the March 16, 2023 protest letter from the sheriffs include restriction on the hours of sale, which are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., some general site maintenance, keeping it free of litter, no single container sales for beer, no wine coolers shall be sold in bottles or containers of less than factory four-packs, again, some site graffiti shall be painted over, monitoring, no consumption of alcoholic beverages on-site, no loitering, and then no wine or spirits shall be sold in bottles or containers smaller than 750 milliliters.
And those are just standard kind of conditions?
Those are pretty standard. Most of these would end up on the liquor license. However, even if ABC does include these on the liquor license, an applicant can then protest the addition of the conditions on the license. Again, sheriff and the county does not have any control over ABC's determination on whether they grant the protest on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'd like to hear public comment and then maybe have a little more of that conversation about that with County Council afterwards, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
If you don't mind, I'd like to kind of follow up, just to be clear on this, because, since the rule change, which I hate, you know, we've got so much less leeway. So these 11 conditions are really recommendations more than, they're not really conditions.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then it's up to ABC whether or not to include those in on the license.
Correct.
But we don't know what they're going to do.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions from the Board? Is there a public comment, or we can hear from the applicant at this point?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, let me just take a quick breath. It has been a long time. It's three years that we've been working on this application, Supervisor Desmond. And you bring up an excellent point, the issue of the cancellation. We will cancel the license. We researched the process to go through with ABC, and we consider that we will absolutely cancel the license. There is no, there will be a net loss, there will be a loss of a license in the county, so he won't be able to sell it anywhere else. We can do that. In addition to that, during this process, after this hearing, when the recommendation gets, the PCN gets forwarded to ABC, we can sign their letters of conditions prior to that happening so that you will know that these conditions have been agreed upon and it's been done with ABC. That's something that could happen, but I just want to offer those two to have you think about it. But I do want to take a few moments to just talk about three very important things that are critical to this process moving forward. One is the crime map. The reason why it took so long is that we were really shocked when we saw, obviously we know there's crime in the area, but to hear that there were incidents on the property itself. Through our, I don't know if that's on, but we did a request for public records through the sheriff's department and came back with modest findings of four incidents. Same thing with our LexisNexis dive into. There's moderate crime, almost, there's four incidents in the calendar year that we did our search on. And I just wanted to say that first and foremost, because, yes, we recognize there's crime throughout our county and throughout our cities, but perspective to this applicant and his property, he does an excellent job of maintaining it. Second, environmental justice. As an environmental planner myself, I take that serious. I was, you know, I think AB 1000 was landmark legislation. I was in the city of Los Angeles at the time when it took place, and I participated on the stakeholder process here in Sacramento County, and we are absolutely right. There does exist an overconcentration in licenses in poor neighborhoods. But the difference that I'd like to highlight, these are the problematic licenses that we deal with most times are grandfathered licenses. The licenses have been here for a long time, that don't have operating restrictions, that don't have, that can stay open until 2:00 a.m., that can sell singles, they can put an ice chest full of tall cans next to their register and sell the, those are the problems. The environmental justice element allows us to develop a framework and policies to go after those operators, and we can. But instead, it feels like every new applicant or every new person that wants to add to their license gets hit with these really strict restrictions, and for good measure. There are not a lot of applicants that I would stand in front of this board, in front of or stand next to, that can pass stand-up to the test. And something that I communicate with the planning staff, and I want to thank them for all the time that they've taken with me over the years of talking, is we stand firm, there are a lot of changes and there's tough roads ahead for the county and for us to generally get this done right, but right now, the way the rules are set up, this operator can stand the test. Lastly, very difficult, and I've been here a few times and I've said this, it's almost impossible to sit here and say there's a public convenience or necessity for alcohol, because there isn't. This is an old law. It's, I don't know, I tried to Google how old it is, but it's probably older than me, and I'm 42. But this past year, ABC released 25 more licenses for Sacramento County. So something's missing. You're going to see us keep coming to this Board of Supervisors again and again, every time they add more licenses. And for the last three years, it's been additional 25 licenses. And so, when you have an operator who has a great record with ABC, no history of violations, who has broad community support, he went from in 2008 leasing a space, a store, to purchasing the entire plaza. He has, he's made incredible investment in the laundry facility next door, the tidy wash, which was thousands of dollars to upgrade, resurfacing the parking lot. Him becoming a property owner and being invested in this community, I mean, it's, the costs have gone up. We haven't even talked about inflation and what most small business owners are going through today. But it's almost a necessity, right, for him to diversify his market and what he can do, and how, what $300 a day may not sound a lot, but that turns into $10,000 a month, 30, 30 to 40% of that is a profit. That will allow him to continue to stay afloat, that'll allow him to continue to make improvements into his property. And I just want you to consider those. The best people to talk are the owners. It's a family-owned business, a ginger car is here, her husband Jesse, and their son Gonora is at the store working now. So with that, I'll leave it to the Board, and I appreciate your time. And I look forward to, after this is over, is continuing to engage the county in this important work, because I have a feeling I'll be here again.
Okay, excuse me, sir. I have a question. So just so I understand the essence of what you're saying is, are you saying that you agree to the 11 conditions that the sheriffs put forward?
Yes, we have, yes. We've talked to the sheriffs for, and ABC, that we agree to their conditions.
So you agree to all 11 of these?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, County Council, is there any way, is there any mechanism available if they're agreeing to it, that this can be placed on the license, or?
So it is at the discretion of the state. The state, Alcohol and Beverages, has exclusive right and control to license and to regulate the manufacturer, the sale, the possession, and the transportation of alcoholic beverages. They are exclusively authorized to impose conditions. If a person requests conditions on their license, the state would have to determine whether they are willing to accept that and to impose it. It is not something that we, as the county, can do.
But would the primary policing of conditions, that would be looking at these conditions, it would be most likely done, I understand they have jurisdiction, but it would, in practicality, be done by local law enforcement for the most part, correct?
Correct. So local law enforcement would make the recommendation to the state, and if the state chose to impose those conditions, then yes, the sheriff would likely enforce them. And we also, if they were imposed on a business license, we would enforce them through that capacity as well.
So there's nothing like, I mean, this is the wrong tool, but there's, you've already answered the question, but I'm going to ask again because it just blows me away, that there's no, like, development agreement, you know, between the parties or anything like that that we could hold on kind of a side letter?
Unfortunately, no, because of the Constitution giving the state the exclusive authority. They have preempted the area.
So was the League of Cities or the CSAC asleep when this went through? All right.
Mr. Chair, can I just piggyback on that a little bit? I was going to kind of delve into this after hearing from a few others, but thank you for bringing this up. So, okay, so legally, it's a preemption issue if we try to impose these same conditions on the business license itself, correct? I mean, if we tried to do an end run around ABC and put those conditions there, instead, we run into a legal issue.
Potentially. The case law says that conditions or requirements that are imposed through land use or business licensing cannot directly regulate or have the effect of regulation of alcohol licenses or the manufacturer, sale, purchase, possession, or transportation of alcoholic beverages.
I mean, it seems to me, you and I had a conversations, but we can, however, regulate issues that touch on health and safety, and I think you can make an argument that some of these conditions do impact health and safety of a community, right?
Yes, we can impose, to the extent possible, nuisance mitigation conditions on the business license. We also can use our land use authority to put geographic limitations in place and restrict businesses selling alcohol in certain areas and things of that nature. But that is the extent of our authority.
I mean, I think we've all, at one time or another, been a little bit frustrated by this process, and we can't utilize the ABC licensing process to impose these conditions. And I think there might be occasions where it's worth it to see if we can get creative and try something different, certainly. You know, I've stood up here many times and talked about how important I think this PCN process is, and I appreciate all the work staff has done and their recommendation based on the proliferation and based on the crime stats. But I also think about, you know, I think it's Emerson who said, you know, foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds, and I think there are occasions where there might be exceptions to that, and certain operators are better than others. I've driven by the property myself multiple times, including this morning, and I know that the owner has done a lot of work over there in that community, and that property is definitely distinct from some of the other properties that are selling alcohol in the community. I mean, that's obvious when you go by there. So, okay, well, I'd like to maybe hear the rest of the public comment and then see what we can do from there.
Could I make one last comment? So, for example, we have, our ABC license representative has a letter for us to sign that says, "Do you agree to these conditions?" We could sign those yesterday and have brought them to you here if they would have made it easier. So it's, we've already settled with ABC that we've accepted these conditions and they've been adopted. A few years back, what ends up happening with ABC is, a few years ago, we did Cortland Market, Cortland Mart in Cortland. And when I came before the Board at that time, again, we agreed to those conditions, but when we went to ABC, they're looking for substantial evidence that grounds exist to deny or that crime exists in Cortland, and it wasn't there. And that's because we, at the time, you're treating Cortland Mart like it's Del Paso Heights, and they're too different. And so by the time we got to ABC, the representative didn't carry those conditions on. She carries some, not all of them, because that's their, I think that's their mechanism, has the sheriff's departments provide us substantial evidence that, yeah, we can probably deny this license, and these conditions mitigate some of those. So, thank you.
So as the applicant, is there anybody else you would like, or I can go right to public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, our first public comment is Lakisha. Hey, our first public comment is Lakeisha.
Good afternoon, everyone. Constitution rights, what is Constitution rights? We just don't have them at all. There's, this gentleman said, as far as far as district too, that's Del Paso Heights. That's the worst crime of the area. And they got more alcohols and more liquor stores than anywhere. But my support is for Mr. Jesse, it's because I've been in the neighborhood for 19 years. In the 19 years I've been there, I've seen no crime. The crime around there is just dealing with the homeless people that's in that neighborhood. And I can say that he deals with the homeless people, he supports the homeless people, but he don't have them hanging around. There's no graffiti on his building. He supports everyone. So, I mean, as far as Mr. Jesse and his family, I think they deserve to have the liquor license. There's other stores around in the neighborhood that some people can't even get to. There's stores around there that people have liquor license and lost and still selling alcohol. But hey, that's the law. But I believe that Mr. Jesse deserves to have his liquor license, because he doesn't seem, he doesn't sell single beers, he sells them in quantities. You can't just go in there and just, like any other store, just purchase something for $1.25. No. He sells his stuff to where, if you want to, if you want wine coolers, they are in the four-pack. If you want beer, they in the six-pack. If you just want a quantity, he sells them like that, but he doesn't sell anything as far as singles that you will find in any other neighborhood store. So I do believe that Mr. Jesse deserves to have his liquor license. And my name is Lakeisha Hines. I live in the District of Foothill Farms, and again, I live at 5310 College Oak Drive. And like I said, I've been there for 18, 19 years, and I believe he deserves it. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dora Jane?
My name is Dori Jane Apuna. I'm a registered nurse, and I live around the corner from Jesse's convenience store. I've lived there for 24 years and shopped at his store for, oh, for ages. I'm fully support of Jesse getting this license. He keeps his area very clean, it's very well-lit. At night, I feel very safe of going there, even if I'm just walking in the area. He does not allow people to loiter around the premises, and if anyone becomes unruly, he chases them off right away. So I'm in total support of him getting this license.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Baker, and I'm the president of the Old Foothill Farms Neighborhood Association. Up until probably a couple weeks ago, I was opposing this liquor license. The gentleman sitting behind me is not just a person who sells liquor, he's also a community member, a small business owner in the neighborhood. I think Mr. Desmond said it correct. Sometimes you just got to roll the, roll the dice and see and what sticks, and maybe he might be the perfect one. If, if, if he doesn't hold up to his, his part of the bargain with the sheriff's recommendations, then maybe the county does find a way. Maybe he is the one. I drove by his, his shopping store this morning. It is clean, Mr. Desmond. It is a lot cleaner than a lot of alcohol stores in our neighborhood. We are oversaturated, we do have a lot, we probably have more than anybody else in the neighborhood. But this man doesn't just own a liquor store, he owns laundromats and a couple other businesses in our neighborhood. As long as he agrees, and it sounds like he has, to the sheriff's recommendations, and our community absolutely, positively trusts the sheriffs and their recommendations, the Neighborhood Association would ask that you please grant him these license and allow him to continue to do business in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samirjit? I hope I said that correctly.
Hello, respected supervisors. Good afternoon, especially Mr. Desmond. My name is Samirjit Molly.
Samirjit, okay.
I am, I represent APCA. It's an American Petroleum Sea Store Association, and I'm actually president of Sacramento Chapter. APCA has total 10 chapters throughout California, so we have one in Sacramento. Today, I'm here in strong support for Bee Brother Mini Mart, located 4847 Amber Lane, Sacramento, California 95841. Jesse is an honorable member of a proud nonprofit, American Petroleum and Convenience Store Association, having 2,000-plus members in California. Being president and/or the board member of a local chapter APCA, I have frequently visited his store and always found it neat and clean. The parking lot is well-lit and clean, this is a small family business, and adding alcohol sales to the store will greatly help them in growing business and government tax revenue. Kindly help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert?
How's it going today?
Good.
Good. I just wanted to come and support, voice my support for Bee Brothers Market. I think that it's a great opportunity to actually improve environmental and economic justice in the region. I think that the goal clearly is to try to help the neighborhood, and you have an actor here who's clearly adding to the neighborhood, right? Cleaning it up, making investments in the land, in, you know, different, adding the laundromat, as the speaker before me said. And I think that this is an important thing, to not try to harm the justice of this individual who's trying to come up in the world by, you know, having this blanket, "Hey, no, we can't do this." One thing I did want to touch on, that I felt like was really important to you all, is this distinction about, you know, restrictions on the licenses and alcohol sizes, and you guys can't do it, because clearly, you know, ABC has the jurisdiction. And I wanted to kind of quell your concerns on that, because I think that, and a very important opportunity for this person is the types of things that they sell. So I brought a couple examples of why, you know, things can lead to economic justice. So this is a single-serve beer called Pliny the Elder, you all probably have heard of it. Great beer. This is something that me and many people would look all over Sacramento for. And if he had an opportunity to, if the ABC provisions, you know, allow him, or even the restrictions don't hold, as you guys are concerned about, he could bring in things, products like this, right? The TTB, federal agency, they actually allow for different sizes to be used now and to be sold, and a very popular size now is 700 milliliters.
You got all of that through our security?
Yeah. Because it's a very important thing, right? This is a-
No matter, I think you're supposed to hand that over to the clerk.
And I'll take a couple more seconds since you took, if that's fine. This is a 700-milliliter bottle. And the reason, the reason that's important, though, is they, I looked everywhere, all over Sacramento for this bottle, and unfortunately, a lot of really good liquor stores aren't allowed to sell it because of this restriction, that they can't sell anything less than 750. And so, this is a $109 bottle. The people all over Sacramento are happy to purchase.
Can you wrap up?
Okay, and I'll wrap up. And so the last point I wanted to say is that this particular store is making a ton of leeway in the global Sacramento region, and even the US, really, with Cerveza Landia, if you have heard of it. And so they're selling a lot of Mexican beers and things like that. Part of that extension-
Thanks, Robert. Thank you, Robert.
Part of that extension is tequila. And so I just wanted to point out that, almost exclusively, all formats for tequila are going less than 750.
Thank you, Robert.
And so I think that you're going to harm the economic justice of this applicant by not, by denying this PCN.
We got you.
So please allow this PCN to let him grow the community in Sacramento.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert. You're out of time, Robert. Thank you.
Praminder?
Your security's awesome, by the way.
Hello, my name is Praminder Mishana. I'm also a businessman, plus I'm a good friend of Jesse. I visit his site so many times. It's very neat and clean, and I think he deserved it. So kindly issue him a license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Aaron?
Hello, my name is Aaron. I own a couple businesses, Catty Corner to Jesse on Auburn Boulevard, 4914, and 4926 Auburn Boulevard. I've owned the properties a little over 20 years. I am the landlord, I mean, I own my properties, me and my wife do, and we own the businesses. Jesse is a property owner across from us, there's another business across the way that owns property. There's a few of us that are, are business owners and property owners. Everybody likes Jesse. Jesse is the store to go to. I wanted to make a point, it seems, in the last year and a half since Jim Cooper's been our sheriff, our homeless population problem has gone down a lot. So for the crime reports that are on there, I don't know if there's a variance to see when that has taken place. We had a big parking lot across the way that's, was home to a lot of homeless people until Sheriff Cooper came in. Jesse is, it's a family-owned operation. When you go in there, it's him, his wife, his son. 90%, I say, of the people that go in there, Jesse and his family know the name of the people. He's got very good security. I've had to look at his cameras before to see about my property. He's got all the way around. People don't loiter there, it's, he conducts himself very well. And he has grown his, you know, business with the laundromat. I've helped him with, you know, seeing what, you know, he's made it a very, very nice laundromat. There's not people hanging out there, it's, it's all ran very well. So I'm here in support for Jesse as a local property owner and business owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
My name's Matthew Corona. I work at Go One Center as an event parking attendant. I've lived in the Foothill Farms area for over 20 years. My wife and I have a daughter that's deaf, she's 12 years old. I know, I hear there's a high saturation of liquor licenses in that area, but when it comes to my family, we shop at where we feel safe, especially taking into consideration that our daughter is deaf. We do our laundry at Jesse's laundromat. It would be nice to be able to go there and buy our liquor, and when we do, we drink every once in a while, Friday nights at the, at the, at the store over there, because we like to, we take our kids where we feel it's comfortable, where it's safe. Some other places around there in that neighborhood, we don't like shopping at, at point-blank periods. So I'm just asking, I'm here in support of Jesse and Bee Brothers Market, you know. I think everybody can kind of feel the same, as far as like, you want to shop somewhere where you're comfortable at, somewhere where it's, you know, it's safe, especially with, you know, we got four kids, you know, we're just living a, 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 comedian has a lot of crime, but like, we feel safe going to Jesse's Market, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike?
My name is Mike Pacheco, and thanks for hearing me out. I just want to show some of my support for Jesse. I've been living in the community right there in 4974, somewhere in Circle Force, since 2004. So prior to even Jesse having that business there, I see them make, you know, deep improvement as far as the cleanliness and how, the no loitering, there's definitely no graffiti on the walls or anything like that. And as far as safety goes, you know, I have three daughters, 17, 19, and 20, and I would take them to the store all the time, and they feel really safe about going there. And it's just, that says a lot right there, you know, my daughters are everything, and so I would, you know, happily take them over to the store. She actually, one of my daughters cashed her first check there for her work paycheck, and he made her feel real, like, real, I was looking at her, she was feeling all happy and stuff, so I was like, oh, that's cool, you know, this guy's making, so I just wanted to show my support of Jesse, and then, and hope you guys make a good decision, because he deserves it, if anything he deserves. Jesse has to make a living, just like anybody, and he's going about the right way, you know? He came a long way, I think. So thank you for hearing me, guys. Appreciate it.
Sorry, Steve?
Hi, how you doing? I've been going to Jesse's store for, since 2015. He's helped me out several times. When I was behind on certain bills, he offered to help me out. Yeah, I'm in support of, I'm supportive of him getting his license. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
Good evening, good afternoon. My name's Matthew Alexander, I'm a disabled veteran. Jesse is the place where everybody goes to be safe. Without, before I had transportation, I was able to walk to his store and it's, sit there and, you know, it was, he made you feel home, like you were at home. As for young, the young people and everything, they have great respect for him. And I know, every time I go there, he cars pretty much everybody. He makes sure that you're of age when you're buying your alcohol, you know, and he, he monitor everything, you know, he keeps the outside great. Then with the laundromat, he really improved our, improved that area for everybody. That's where everybody does their laundry now. And there are other stores in that area that are closer to where I stay at, I drive past those to go to Jesse, because I don't like the buildup that they have there, or what I've seen happen to so many stores. And I just wanted to give my recommendation and say that I think he can handle the job. And thank you.
Thank you. Julian?
My name is Juliana Kala. I'm a consultant for Jesse for alcohol. So in LA, in San Diego County, I pretty much give him advice on the draft craft beer niche that we have. So we're trying to provide more of a creative, you know, capacity for this liquor store compared to the other liquor stores that are around the area. They're just selling basic beers that nobody wants to drink. And so we focus on giving him information, data, to really make him stand out in the competition. You know, there's tons of liquor license out there, and the best thing to do is just, you know, provide craft beers, like our passionate customer Bobby with, you know, all that alcohol he brought here, and, you know, the Cantadritos, all that sort of Cerveza Landia stuff, just really, just be different than all these other guys who are just applying for licenses. And, you know, Jesse, we spent years just really crafting a good market for him. You can tell by everybody else that's coming here to support, that they come here regularly, and that's, that's our goal, right? To be a, a community space for them to buy alcohol and party and do whatever they're going to do. But at the end of the day, we want to just offer something different than, than the rest, so that's it.
Thank you. William?
Good afternoon, my name's William Shealy. I'm just here in support of Jesse. I've known him for like 15 years, he's been a great part of the community. I'm up here because my wife tells me to tell you guys that the laundromat is nice and clean, she feels safe there. The, the machines are new, he doesn't let, have old crappy machines. And it's kind of, he kind of lends out a hand to the people in the, in the community and helps them out. I was one of them back in the day when I wasn't so well off. Now I'm rolling, do business remodels in the area, or, or home remodels. And I probably wouldn't have been able to do it all if he wouldn't have been there to help me with those first few steps to getting out of homelessness. Boom, boom. Those first few steps are critical. And when I got him down, though, now I'm just rolling. So it's all good, and he's one, he might have been the person that helped me, I don't know. It's hard to say, but thank you.
Thank you, William. Charminy?
Good afternoon, my name is Charminy Gary. I'm one of the residents that live in the area. Me and my kids, they go from 26 down to 10. Jesse's very good, a very good person. You know, when I'm not around, my son's around. We use all the, all of his stores, the laundromat, we buy hoodies from the middle store, and of course, we use his regular convenience store. So I just feel that he's a very compassionate person. He honestly knows when a person hasn't been around for a while. I recently had, had a situation where I almost passed away in January. I come back, and he's like, "So how are you doing?" I'm like, "Huh?" You know, so he was like, "Haven't seen you in a while." I'm like, "Well, I'm doing okay." He's like, "Well, your son was in," which his son and my son have the same birthday, his older son. So I just think he's a very good person. His wife is a great person. They pay attention to the people that come in, you know, and so I just feel like they deserve a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrine or Catherine?
Katrine.
Okay.
Well done, not everybody gets that.
It's occupational hazard.
Yeah, good afternoon. I have been visiting Jesse's store for about 15 years. I live about a two-minute walk away. This is the only store I'll go into at night, I'm a single woman. It's the only place that I will go. Jesse's store isn't a convenience store, it's a neighborhood market. It's a neighborhood market. It's almost like family. He's an incredible man. He's helped me also. Like I said, it's the only place I feel safe, and I'm here to completely support him 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber?
Hello, my name's Amber Bridges. I've lived in the neighborhood for about eight years now. And one of the concerns you guys had was the 200% over-concentration of alcohol proprietors in the area. I want to say a few months ago, I was in the store. I was purchasing just like some chips and some soda, and I was behind a guy that was like stumbling up to the counter, and it looked like he was trying to buy some beer. Jesse literally said to him, like, hey, man, I can't sell you this beer. Like, you don't need any more. The dude actually started getting kind of like a little aggressive, Jesse, instead of like responding with aggression himself, just continued to respond with kindness and was like, hey, man, you know, you don't need this beer, and I can't sell this to you. And the dude actually was like, man, you're just really looking out for me, Jesse. And he turned back to me and he said, Jesse, really looking out for me? And I was like, yeah, man, he is. And he just walked outside the store without purchasing the alcohol. So if you're worried about the over-concentration, I don't think you're going to have to worry about a proprietor that's going to be selling to people that are already drunk or have to worry about selling to minors or anything like that, that we've had issues with in the area in the past. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel?
Okay, so I guess I'll just end it off by saying, clearly from the rest of the community, we just want to show him support. I'm not even super excited to like buy alcohol from him and stuff, but I did want to show up today and just give him the support, because he's just supported everyone as well, not just myself, clearly, not even just anybody in this room, but a lot of the community around us. So, yeah, he's just amazing. I love him and his family, so. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
I conclude your public comments.
Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. So first, let me say that in my time on the Board of Supervisors, I don't think I've seen, ever seen this many community members show up to speak in support of a store owner acquiring a particular liquor license. So I just want to thank everyone for taking time out of your days to impress upon this board, your impression of the proprietor, and that's not lost on me and perhaps others. I guess what I'm struggling with is the fact that, as is kind of alluded to in the beginning of the board letter, is that this is an environmental justice community, and it's not just a throwaway comment. It's actually well-established in our general plan. I think it's one of four environmental justice communities that are identified in our general plan. And what concerns me is precedent. And the particular precedent that concerns me is that, that we would go ahead and approve this today, and I don't know, six months from now, we get another similar request from a community that's not an environmental justice community, and the staff recommendation is to deny. And we do, and let's say that the board takes staff's recommendation and supports it, perhaps it doesn't kind of come with the onslaught of community support that we've seen today. But then you'd have a look back and say, well, that Board of Supervisors is interested in denying liquor stores for communities that are maybe, you know, not communities of color, that are perhaps well-off in terms of their socioeconomic status, but is willing to put yet another liquor store in a community of color, or a community that is, you know, perhaps more economically challenged. And that's what, that's the sticking part for me is, I don't want to send mixed signals here. I want to do what's right by the community at the same time. And I, you know, again, I think the testimony I've heard today is authentic. There's no reason to think it isn't. If nothing else, the proprietor should feel great, but he has a customer base that has got some very sincere appreciation for the way he treats his customers and does business in their neighborhood. But that kind of encapsulates my thinking right now, is that, you know, I don't want to be forced or put in an awkward position time and time again, where these PCNs and the outcome of their request is really based on how many folks we can get to show up to a meeting to say good or bad things about someone. But even more so, I don't want there to be a clear distinction between how this board is treating environmental justice communities and non-environmental justice communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Supervisor Serna, because you really articulated some of my own struggles as well. I mean, that is certainly a concern of mine, is establishing a precedent. I also want to thank all the members of the community for coming here, and Jesse, for the business that you run. I mean, I should probably be hosting community meetings for Foothill Farms at your business, because you're obviously such an epicenter for the community and a resource for the community, and I absolutely appreciate that. What I'm really struggling with, and we talked about this a little bit before, is, is there a way we could possibly, you know, continue this item and see if we could come up with a creative way to impose these conditions? And I see Mr. Savala, right, you're nodding your head. And it sounds like you do have some knowledge about the way ABC works. We have a different experience with ABC in terms of our attempts to impose conditions on licensees. But I'd certainly be willing to continue this matter, to see if there's something creative we can do, either with some conditions imposed as part of a land use decision that is not preempted and actually has some teeth to it, or revisiting this issue with ABC. I think, based on the community input, based on two CPAC recommendations and other community leadership here today, I think it would be at least worthwhile to take a little more time and delve into this, see if there's something we can do differently, without just simply setting a precedent that Supervisor Serna so artfully articulated, would be a problem, because it would not be a true indication of whether a PCN approval is right or wrong. It would just be a reflection of whether an applicant can turn people out, has the resources to turn people out, to support them. So I know Supervisor Hume has a comment, but that would be my motion to continue this matter, and I will certainly work with county council and staff and also the applicant to see if there's a way we can impose conditions on this license or on the business as part of our land use authority.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, and we have more comments. Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll be brief, because I support the motion on the table here. And I came into this meeting fully prepared to accept staff's recommendation, because given the objective standards by which they measure this application, it meets exactly what Supervisor Serna said, this should not be allowed. However, I take the PCN seriously, in that it's a matter of public convenience, and I'm hearing from people who are most publicly affected with the convenience of this store and how Jesse runs his business. And I think if they're not objecting, why am I sitting up here objecting? And so really, if you think about a free market economy, to the extent that this gentleman's operation is allowed to flourish, then more customers will flock to it, instead of some of these stores where they don't feel safe, where they don't want to bring their family, where they don't want the shenanigans that are going on. So I hope we can figure out a way. I think you're being very reasonable and generous, frankly, in your offer to surrender, truly surrender, your existing license, rather than just putting it back out on the open market, and also to abide by the suggestions made by the sheriff's office and by ABC. And so I certainly support taking a longer look at this. I think you've been at this for a couple of years now. A little bit longer will be worthwhile, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to come out and obviously speak about somebody that they think is operating a good business. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor. A couple of things I have. Counsel, refresh my memory. Is, does the license run with the land, or is it the individual or the company?
I believe it's the individual and the company.
Okay. That's important. And I'll just say briefly that Supervisor Serna, I think, hit it on the head there. This, to me, isn't about Jesse and B Brothers Market. This is about a bigger policy discussion that we need to have, and one of fairness throughout the entire county, not just one precinct or one census tract. It's not, to me, the decision has nothing to do with Jesse and B Brothers Market. In fact, if I could condition it so that Jesse, you have to move to my neighborhood, I would. But we do have to have that bigger policy discussion, and I think that having time to do that and finding some way, I'm not hopeful, quite frankly, Supervisor. I think we've been down this road, but it's worth another shot. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please. And thank you, everybody, for coming out. We really appreciate it.
Item 45, this is the County of Sacramento Main Jail intake and health services facility peer review. Approve the agreement in the amount of $585,980 with CGL Companies for comprehensive peer review services on the design and construction of the new intake and health services facility.
I'm sorry. We still have, we still have some business to take care of. If you could leave quietly, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. Go ahead, Flo.
That was it.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Sylvester Fodell, Deputy County Executive. The item before you today for approval is one that would traditionally be on consent, but recognizing the broad goodwill interest on this subject, we thought it'd be best to officially present it to you with some information before you can take an action on it. So this item has been presented to the board quite a few times. The last time it came before the board was August of 2023, where the board very clearly raised concerns about the increasing scope of the project and the escalating cost, which is sort of slightly deviated from the original plan that was initially presented to the board. Subsequently, county leadership decided to pause the overall project and the planning activities, so we could seek a third-party validation through a peer review process. Given the project scale, the rising cost, and the board's concerns, an objective peer review is typically standard process, is the right thing to do. It helps bring what we would consider a fresh perspective and carefully, to enable us carefully examine all the documents produced thus far, including the programming and conceptual plan. Such a review at this level, it's typical in the industry, especially when there are concerns about the scale and cost of a project. So there's nothing wrong with it. It does help, the review helps mitigate costs. It could help identify efficiencies and potentially reduce the scope of the overall project. And at the very tail end on an extreme, and it could help cost correct and maybe change the entire direction of the project. So it's often recommended to embrace this project with an open mind, rather than viewing peer review as an indication of a broken system. It is a prudent and consistent approach that industries have typically embraced when it comes to critical projects. So as it relates to the approach that was taken by the county, we advertised in January for architectural, engineering, and construction firms to provide peer review on this project. And we did receive inquiries from quite a few firms, but ultimately, at the end, we received complete packages from two highly qualified firms. We constituted an interview panel that was made up of an engineer, an architect, and a representative from county council. And these were folks who really had very limited interest and participation in the initial design of the project. Upon review of the information that was submitted, a decision was ultimately made to present to you the name that is on the board recommendation today, which is on CGL Companies. They were chosen as the most qualified to lead this project, and to be able to implement the different review phases, we believe would help lay some clarity on the project we have on hand right now, which is the conceptual design. So CGL would essentially conduct an architectural design assessment, conduct an operations efficiency analysis, legal compliance review, and most important, overall, take a look at the well-being and the healthcare evaluation of this draft plan we have with us at this point. I do want to state that CGL Companies is in the chambers with me, and if technical questions do come up as to the arrow, they can most certainly respond to those questions. I also have my DGS team that has been involved with this overall design process, supporting the consulting firms in the chambers with me as well. Upon approval by the board, CGL would commence work immediately, and the entire review is expected to last approximately five months. So we expect to have something back to be presented to the board sometime around September of 2024. In closing, I just want to reiterate to the board that CGL was selected through a rigorous process to oversee the review of the overall schematic design project. This approach ensures a fair assessment, providing confidence in moving forward, and hopefully to help address the concern that has been raised when this item came before the board, August of 2023. And I'll pause right there to see if the board has any questions.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thank you, Sylvester. So I have a general overarching question here about how the table was set, so to speak, for consideration of firms for peer review, and ultimately, the staff's determination on this particular firm to bring to the board. As you're well aware, everyone's well aware, I think, there's been, I think it's fair to say, growing concern and declining appetite for high-cost construction as it relates to meeting the intent of the May's consent decree, and not just by this composition of this board, but the composition of a prior board. So I guess what I want to know is, was it articulated clearly to all competing firms for peer review services that, A, there's nothing in the consent decree, or for that matter, in the plaintiff's complaint, perhaps other than ADA non-compliance, that stipulates that anything else necessarily needs to be constructed, other than bringing the building into ADA compliance, and perhaps the booking loop? And then, secondly, was there a strong reminder, again, in the interest of kind of giving firms a very clear understanding of where we are and what this board has already been through in terms of looking at alternatives, that we want to obviously look at a least cost, lowest cost alternative, especially since the last time we got an update on certain aspects of potential construction, it's creeping up towards a billion dollars with a B. And that, again, there's nothing that specifically states thou shalt build anything. So I just want to kind of understand, perhaps before we hear from others, if that was made clear.
Do I do have my, and in a minute, I'm going to have Brian or Natasha come up here and speak to the specifics of it, but in response to your very first question, the answer is yes. When you're conducting a peer review, which is typically done, not just in the construction industry, it's done in the medical field, it's done in the educational field, it's just a way of validating a project, one of the most important aspects of conducting this review is the authority for the reviewer to say, listen, your entire design so far is flawed. You can address the same, or you could meet language or the tenets of the May's consent, without having to build a jail annex. They would have the authority to give that feedback based on their They would have the authority to give that feedback based on their review of the conceptual plan. And what is required of the the company that is being recommended today is to review the May's Consent, understand what's in the May's Consent, and be able to say, based on your conceptual design, half a faith doesn't even address the issues in the May's Consent. So they would essentially come back to to state, to the Board and to staff, what is May's Consent related in the draft plan and what isn't, and if we do need to proceed at all. So and that's what I talked about, cost correction, they could essentially say, you can meet this entire regulation by not building a new jail. That's the sort of feedback we're expecting to get from this expert.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, you have more presentation or?
No, that's that's it.
That's it, okay. So we have public comment?
We do. Our first public comment is Kian Fliss.
It's been a minute. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Decarcerate Sacramento on this item and just remind the Board, for years, thousands of Sacramento residents have organized and mobilized to speak out against jail construction plans and advocate for for alternative solutions to meeting the May's Consent Decree. And together, a broad alliance of organizations, individuals, and architects exposed not only that the $1 billion jail expansion was fiscally and morally irresponsible, but that the county has many viable options that don't involve building at all. We hope that if rewarded this contract, CGL takes seriously the robust track record of public discussion and community expertise on this matter. CGL proudly states on its website that they believe brick and mortar is the last resort rather than the first, and that they are committed to developing solutions that are responsive to social needs, restoring the legitimate role of community in the justice system. We hope that CGL and the Board will continue to recognize that Decarcerate Sacramento and its many allies have been facilitating and leading this community conversation since 2019, putting the experiences and perspectives of people incarcerated in our jails and their families front and center. Just before the county announced its decision to pause the project last year, Decarcerate Sacramento submitted an extremely detailed and well-researched review of the proposed jail expansion that was cosigned by dozens of organizations, including architects and legal experts. The letter outlined the false justifications for jail expansion that were far outside the scope of May's Consent Decree requirements, how the plan severely underutilized existing jail space, and inflated bed needs, the misuse of funds allocated to ADA renovations, wasteful design and spending, and a proposed Plan B that could address spatial limitations by reducing the jail population and repurposing existing space. This third-party review is a serious opportunity for the county and the chosen firm to think critically about the solutions in racial and economic justice and health equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney? Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I appreciate your comments to kick us off, Supervisor Serna. Courtney Hanson with Decarcerate Sacramento. At the end of the day, CGL is focused on justice facilities, specializing in facility planning, design, maintenance, and operations, and we do feel strongly at this stage that we need to think outside of the box and outside of jail walls. The majority of May's Consent Decree requirements focus on policies and practices of the Sheriff's Department, not the physical space, and the county has been making some progress on compliance without a new building. We need a significant increase in available mental health beds in our community as dozens of people languish in our jails awaiting space for diversion. We need to bring people home from outrageous levels of pretrial incarceration. Over 70% of people in our jails are locked away for years before any conviction at times. We need accountability for the disproportionate policing and incarceration of black people and other people of color, poor people, people with disabilities and severe mental health needs, not deeper investment in the system that guarantees the continuation of these inequities. Sheriff Departments are not service providers. Christopher Gilmore was shot and killed by Sacramento sheriffs while experiencing a mental health crisis on March 23rd. They killed Jaime Neronho, Sharon O'Stingley in their neighborhoods, and Norman Fisher, Jr., Michael Prince, Delion Johnson, Robert Lee Wood, Maria Gonzalez, Irma J. McLaughlin, William Stevens, and so many others inside our jails, at least 25 people since 2021 alone. The people of Sacramento do not want jail construction. We want our county to minimize additional resources going into the jail system to the greatest extent that is possible. We know that our jails will continue to violate people's rights, break apart families, cause premature death, and get hit with lawsuits until we address the simple fact that we incarcerate way too many people and people with needs that cannot be met in a jail setting. We cannot build or police our way out of this public health crisis. We look forward to keeping the community engaged through this third-party review process, and we hope that CGL welcomes that collaboration and happy that the next item will look at what's going on with jail population reduction. I think y'all are doing some good things. Thank you.
Thank you. Teddy?
Hello. My name is Teddy Georgoff. I've been researching May's for quite some time now. I've been in collaboration with Eric Jones, per your request Chair. I was fortunate enough to spend some time with the brilliant Sarah Britton from County Council, members of the community, and a few supervisors as well, as well as DGS. In the past six months, I have presented to this Board two packets, which show objective evidence that the solution provided to us was significantly past the scope of May's. I think although we have all the information in front of us to refute a new facility, at least the one that was proposed, I would like to thank the Board for seeking a third-party review. When talking about a project of this magnitude, it seems reasonable to spend less than $1 million to save potentially hundreds of millions of dollars, and I am hopeful that CGS will observe through their studies that if the goal is only May's compliance, a significantly smaller scope project will be all that is needed to comply. There are 386 demands in the May's Consent Decree. According to our latest county compliance report, 63% of them actually are already in compliance, and a large portion of them are on their way. I'm confident that if CGL goes through the remaining 108 demands, they will find that only about eight of them remaining have any need for an increase in space or requirements for retrofitting. Those eight remaining demands are centered around, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, ADA and HIPAA compliance around booking. Additionally, acute mental health housing or adequate housing, which has already been approved with the retrofitting in the 300 West Third Floor. In my most recent report I emailed to you all two months back, I showed a full compliance is highly probable with the minimal construction of a new booking loop. That could be retrofit in the existing facility, but it'd probably be more expensive, so making a secondary unit outside of the main facility makes sense in that regards from a fiscal perspective. It would be my suggestion that CGL hyper-focus on May's demands, learn it well, and deduce from that what is remaining to comply. Other facilities proposed, such as a 17,000-square-foot new kitchen, new office spaces, weight training facilities, and locker room facilities, are definitely not required for May's. I look forward to the final report that CGL will develop, and I am happy to help share my findings with the firm to assist in their study. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teddy.
That concludes your public comment.
That's all the public comment we have. I'm going to start with a question of staff, based upon what Teddy said and and just, you know, looking at the Board letter, kind of bounces back and forth. Is the purpose of this, you know, and I think we need to be as clear as possible, is the purpose of this to do a a third-party peer review strictly looking through the lens of May's Consent Decree or bigger overall needs at the jail?
Well, I I think, Mr. Chair, that's a great question. It's probably a combination of both.
Well, then then it's actually the latter.
Yeah, it's the latter. So, well, it's the latter. But what what we believe is interesting, we've been able to walk with the sheriff's team, and we've taken a tour of the main jail, and we've seen the condition of the jail. We're getting true experience as to what exists in the jail system and the way it's set up, the infrastructure, what needs to be retrofitted, ADA compliance issues, and a variety of other items. But we're hoping to bring an independent set of eyes to review both the May's Consent, existing infrastructure on ground, and be able to hopefully take a tour of these facilities as well, rather than just looking at written documentation, visit the facilities, get a good feel for it, then ultimately make a recommendation to the Board.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I I just kind of want to echo the comments made by some of the speakers as well as as in the presentation and from the dais that I think, you know, given the necessary shelf life of what we're looking to do here and the obviously what landed us in the position where we have to make any changes at all, and the ballooning price tag that I think went well beyond anyone's comfort level, this is a prudent first step, and so I would be happy to make the motion to engage CGL in a third-party review.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Chair will second. Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Okay, for item forty-six, this is the Jail Population Reduction Plan's annual update.
I'll go ahead and introduce myself. Oh, there it is. Okay, great. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, Board members. I'm Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice. And this dovetails into May's Consent Decree-related issues. There really are three different frameworks. The original framework out of the Consent Decree itself is really around policy, practices, and staffing. And then, as we'll see in the timeline in a moment, two additional frameworks were created and approved by the Board. One is Capital Projects, and you heard that update already, and then the framework around what is known as the Jail Population Reduction Plan, which you will be hearing about in this specific presentation, and you will hear that the jail population during the period examined did reduce 6%, not as much as we would like, as quickly as we would like, but still we did receive, we did realize a reduction. I'll give the presentation of the overview, and then following my presentation, Kevin O'Connell will be available to provide some context around the data and the data-specific questions. I also have our analysts that did the data work, as well as experts in the fields of a lot of the different areas that have different components of the Jail Population Reduction Plan. Here's a brief condensed history of May's-related dates. So 2015 is when Disability Rights California, and PLO, Prison Law Office, we now speak of as Class Counsel, contacted the county regarding inmate treatment concerns. Through 2018, that's also when we saw adult correctional health services shift from the sheriff's office. 2019, negotiations began between the county and Class Counsel. 2020 is when the county officially entered the May's Consent Decree with six primary remedial areas around ADA, in the jails, ADA, mental health care, medical care, housing, discipline, and suicide prevention. And as you already heard also, there are actually 386 areas for compliance, most relating to policies and practices, while some are related to space limitations. Although I do want to make clear nowhere in May's Consent Decree does it mandate something need be built. That is, that is accurate. 2021, Kevin O'Connell, who is here with us today, did his Jail Population Reduction Study. And then in 2022, Class Counsel entered into an agreement with county on facility remediation and jail population reduction plans, essentially the two frameworks. So a key question is, why do we have to do the Jail Population Reduction Plan? It is because it is part of the May's Consent Decree, and it is something that the county did agree in December of 2022 to do with county council and Class Counsel. So here is the annual report for the revised framework. So the Jail Population Reduction Plan plans were always meant to evolve. The vision for the revised Jail Population Reduction Plan, however, does remain unchanged. We're working on improvements across the criminal justice system to reduce the jail population within both jails. And the target number identified is a goal of at least 600 over time. There was never anything to say it was going to happen all at once, nor should it happen all at once. It should be occurring over time. And there are three key strategy areas, which again are unchanged: front end, middle section, and the back end. So this is jail admissions, lengths of stay, and returns to custody. We have taken what you have heard of as the thirty before, the 33 individual May's Consent Decree components of the Jail Population Reduction Plan. You'll see here in a moment, we have consolidated that into six key strategies to better focus on the the areas where we really need to invest more. We also continue to refine the the plan itself and the metrics. We are determining which metrics and measurements we should be looking at. We're getting better access to data between all of our different law enforcement and criminal justice system partners. The work we're doing is really candidly pushing us all a little bit out of our comfort zones in one way or another to be able to see results in the Jail Population Reduction Plan. We're looking, we're getting community input, scanning for best practices, evidence-based practices across the country, working with folks such as the Institute for Safety and Justice Challenge, and examining what folks are doing in other regions. So here are our six strategies that do encompass the 33 original May's Consent Decree component plans for jail population reduction. And also visually depicted across the top are how they overlap with the three key goal areas. The actual six strategies are down in the column. And again, these six consolidated areas really give us key areas to strategically focus upon. When we found when we had 33 items and we're working with all of our various community, internal, external stakeholders, agency experts, it could be a bit overwhelming, and this gives us much clearer focus. But again, it still contains all all elements. Nothing's different there. So I'll go down fairly briefly each strategy, again, available for questions if there are any. First one is offering behavioral health interventions before and during a crisis to prevent bookings. So again, as we enter folks who are in a crisis, is there something else that first responders can do with the individual where it's perhaps not being booked into jail? I want to highlight a lot of great work that's come out of Health Services with better access to crisis services. All 11 core centers are fully open. 988 community wellness response teams, as of March 1st, they are now 24/7. So these are just a few examples of a lot of what Health Services is doing and really pushing in that area.
Hang on a second, Eric.
Excuse me, Eric, real quick. And also the crib as well, something that, I mean, that's been a huge, I think, plus in terms of an alternative for law enforcement to take somebody instead of booking them, arresting them, bring them down to the jail. And I think it's been a very effective pre-arrest or pre-booking diversionary program, from from what I'm hearing, both from law enforcement and from folks in the mental health field too. So I just wanted to highlight that as well, because I think that's one of the, one of the bright spots in terms of that early intervention.
Yes. Thank you, Supervisor. Strategy two is maximizing initial deflection and pre-remant release opportunities for eligible individuals. There are a couple parts to to this strategy. The first really is part one would be citing and releasing, and this is mostly on the law enforcement in the field, contact with an individual, increasing, the goal here is to increase as much as we can citing and releasing in the field or processing at some other location where they can still be perhaps officially booked and, again, processed with a court date, but not necessarily having to do that down at the main jail if we don't need to. If we're able to determine they perhaps don't need to be housed within the main jail, can they be cited and released or processed at other locations? And then we're looking at the second part of it, if someone has to be taken to jail, how do we reduce their stay appropriately? So you may have heard of QICs, where they're they're not housed, they're there for a number of hours, but how can we make more efficient those processes? And then we're also looking at, and you'll see in a moment, but integrated or integrative resource centers, a model. We've seen various examples across the country, some in the state, which are locations where an individual can be taken and sort of can go one of two ways within the same facility, perhaps be booked and housed, or receive the treatment that they need right there, or held for a period of time where they're not actually housed with main population. We're continuing to work on examining those. The third one, minimizing the federal and out-of-county inmates. This is where we've had the most success because it is the thing that's most within the actual county purview that we can do because we decreased the contract with the federal government, so we house fewer that are awaiting federal court and federal cases. Number four and number six are where we are spending the most amount of time and we see, wait, we have some potential positive outcomes headed that way. Number four is reducing time in jail for those who can be safely released into the community or placed in alternative care facilities. So we're working with, again, all of our partners, public defender, court, probation, sheriff's office. We're working on pretrial release, so we're working on expanding that. A recent court decision called Welchin versus Bonta, where we're where we're also improving processes there. And then, an additional part of this is mental health diversion. So, recent legislation has made it a little bit more difficult for all of us, because more folks are eligible now for mental health diversion, a lot. So we have found that the system's getting a bit backed up. For example, before they can get an assessment to see if they're qualified for mental health diversion, they're staying in jail longer than we believe they should because of the backup. And it's first from staffing, from defense counsel, behavioral health, backlog in court. So we're having a lot of regular meetings to streamline that as much as we can, to reduce the amount of stays in jail for those who don't really need to be there.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Eric, as it relates to Row Four there, the intent to reduce time in jail, how should we be thinking about the amount of discretion or not that we have separate from the courts to come up with alternatives? So in other words, you know, we may think we have the better mousetrap in terms of, I don't know, some kind of modified, I'll just say house arrest or something, something that's not jail. But how much of the court, the court's role is really the determining factor as to what can and cannot be pursued?
I'll say there's, there are some discretionary components that the sheriff's office or between defense counsel and DA can work out. But ultimately, the biggest piece of this is the court. And so, most of our lengths of stay and other parts of the jail population are directly attributed to the, to Superior Court.
And I would imagine that, on its face, certain offenses, they're just non-starters, right? Certain violent offenses?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Can I ask Paul, Mr. Chair? So just so I'm clear. So then, these are, we're talking about a population of individuals who, if not for the delay at either the court, and you're saying a lot of it is because of the court process, they are otherwise eligible to get out or get into a diversionary program. But they're being kept in because of this delay.
In many of the cases, it is a delay or what I would call a backlog that has many components of it, from DA, defense, public defender's office, behavioral health, the court, all have some piece of that, and that there's a backlog with all of them.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that, to me, that is a very, an area of low-hanging fruit, where if we can get to that and do a much better job, that's not a question of, you know, jeopardizing public safety. That doesn't even come into discussion. These are people who otherwise, we know, are going to be eligible to get out. And I think we need to do everything we can to make sure we have the resources to make that happen much quicker.
To your point, the last thing you just said, resources, you know, I'm not going to speak for our public defender who's up in the gallery, but I would imagine she might have got a little twitch when you said that that was the low-hanging fruit, just because in concept, it probably is. But without the budget necessarily to be able to do more, it remains that, just a concept, right?
Agreed, agreed. But I'm, in terms of kind of the politics, I mean, I think that's an area we could, should all be able to agree upon.
Thank you. And one very large part of this for the length of time for the assessments is also staffing that Behavioral Health Services has, is a pretty large component, too. And then, also related to this same strategy are sentencing alternatives. The work that Chief Yarber, probation, are doing with Adult Day Reporting Centers, Collaborative Courts, another piece, Sheriff's Office Work Release Program, and their electronic monitoring, all areas, we're looking at additional ways to tackle this problem. And then, under number five is reducing jail admissions and returns to custody from warrants and violations. And then, number six, improving, which is another area that Deputy County Executive Katari and my work overlaps a lot, is on improving service linkages and reducing barriers to treatment, employment, and housing. These are the collaborative work groups that really are addressing everything we just spoke about with different stakeholder groups. And many of them, a lot of the department heads from the various agencies sit on almost all of them, or some at least. And you can see there, I did mention we are really interfacing two of them together, which is Integrated Resource Center and Service Linkaging Work Group, because maybe perhaps an Integrated Resource Center doesn't need to be an actual concrete building, but just really the concept that we're applying here that we've seen done well in other jurisdictions. So getting to really the highlights of the report, as mentioned, we've seen a slight reduction in the jail population during this timeframe. Jail population is down from 2021, 6%. And when compared to most other California counties during the same timeframe, we're above average in a reduction percentage. The largest seven counties averaged a 3% reduction during the same time period. Some counties actually increased, three of the seven that I mentioned. So our 6% decrease in the scope of all things considered can be considered significant. And we knew the reductions of a goal of 600 was not going to happen all at once. And true, most of our reduction was based on the federal contract reduction. We've also found there are other areas of improvement. Again, Health Services has done so much around crisis resources, and we have a lot of more collaboration and work we can do there. I will point out, and it's in the report, that jail bookings were up. So jail bookings were up. However, our jail population actually did go down, but we have seen an increase in bookings.
Is that because we're having more, what do you call them, QICs?
It's for a variety of reasons. Increase of reported crimes against persons in some areas, increased court commitments, so we have to work more with the court there, more law enforcement activity on what may have been considered lower-level crimes and bookings there. So it's a sort of a combination of a number of factors. We're also seeing misdemeanants in custody higher, likely due to violations of restraining orders related to domestic violence charges, which did jump in 2023. And again, as I mentioned, the federal contract reduction was the most significant part of our overall Then, more highlights, the last slide on this one, some more issues of how it really shows the challenges and opportunities. The law changes, legislation continues to impact us system-wide in our capacity. We spoke a little bit about that. We also spoke about how there are a lot, the court has a lot of the discretion that we don't as a county or my criminal justice partners. Many of the alternatives do require voluntary participation as opposed to involuntary. I will highlight that expanded, so some good news on the horizon, expanded care coordination through CalAim Justice Involved Initiative, as well as the Social Health Information Exchange, known as SHE, should help with this jail population reduction. CalAim became effective about three months ago, but we're still rolling it out. That'll ensure those in jail are linked to Medicaid services, 90-day pre-release, and established discharge plans. And SHE will help us more effectively coordinate care. But that's still two years out, we believe. I'll summarize here the next steps. We'll be doing six-month reports. We were previously doing, annual reports, I will come back to you annually on this. We are moving to six-month reports for a number of reasons instead of quarterly. One is, we're barely catching up with the data and starting to analyze it before we're looking at the next time period. But most importantly, it lines up with our six-month reports we already do to report back on MACE consent decree into the court. So aligning those just makes the most sense. So we'll be doing six-month reports. We'll continue to advance implementing the six strategies with our criminal justice partners and focus on better understanding our data to continue to do this work. The really only difference here, I would say in the conclusion, is that we are working on a, with our community groups, a public-facing dashboard. So the community does not have to wait or come to this session. They're able to use an interactive dashboard on the variety of data as well. So now, I'd like to see if Kevin O'Connell wanted to provide more around the context in a couple areas, and then also some questions around the data as well. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. Good to see you again. I presented, I think, late 2022 about exactly kind of what led to this point now. And I think the ask from the county was, I gave you a little bit of an update on kind of where the county has gone, and how this kind of turned into kind of the strategies we're presenting today. And I think the grouping of those six strategies was from that initial report. In 2021, when the report was, when I first developed the report with the data I had, the idea was to say, you know, really, when COVID was still kind of, you know, part of all of our lives in a very distinct way, the jail was really a big part of that, too, because a lot of the choices were made, the emergency choices, the policies, were still in that, in that system. And so, any kind of projections from 2021 would have to say, what do we think is going to go back to 2019 or early 2020? How can we look out into the future and know how these systems are going to react, how new policies will interact with all the things coming from COVID? So I think the purpose of that report was to give the county a set of options and levers to say, let's focus on one really distinct part, and not just say the sentenced population, or the unsentenced population, or people coming in with mental health needs. Like, what part of the system are we talking about? So an example would be, I think those in Eric Jones's presentation was, we have a population that comes in, you know, they're staying more than zero days, but they're probably being, coming out at arraignment, day three or four. That's a portion. There are people that were being let out at arraignment anyway. How could we look at pre-arraignment releases quicker? So they're all coming out, they get released anyway. How do we speed up that process, even by one day, for, you know, about 10,000 people? So the challenge here is really not just those long lengths of stay, really all those people that come through very quickly. How can we get to the best disposition, the quickest and safest disposition, and a connection to services as quickly as possible? The challenge there is how do you be really specific in a complex, fast-moving systems with real people, real lives, real complexity, all the staff that do this? How do we make sure we can create some policies, but also make sure we have funding in place to make those things sustainable? You cannot divert somebody to nothing. You have to divert them to a service. But how to make sure those services are sustainable and linked to policy and procedures?
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So to the, to the point about the dynamics of arraignment and length of stay, so it kind of begs the question, what's the purpose? I mean, what's the, so if someone's being kept three or four days, which could otherwise be limited to maybe same-day arraignment or release, what is, what is, what's the actual legal purpose for the arraignment? Is it to get them in the system? And if we don't have the resources to do it quickly, then it comes at the sacrifice of their liberty, and they're incarcerated?
Well, I think there's two parts of the thing. The purpose of the arraignment is to bring the initial charges, and not an attorney, so an attorney who's the one who files the charges. But that's really the first time the person is being in open court to hear the charges against them as they're being filed initially. And a lot of those choices are really, is that going to be in custody or out of custody? So the arraignment can still happen anyway. But it's, are they in custody or out of custody would be the question.
And did we learn, or do you, can you cite perhaps what other jurisdictions learned by way of our experience through COVID? When we had to do things virtually, is there, are there efficiencies that could continue that make arraignment and the bringing of charges done more swiftly?
Well, I think a big part of that is doing, using different kinds of risk assessment. And again, that, I think, opens up other, you know, I think, questions that have probably been ongoing in the county of the role of these, you know, kind of risk assessment or actuarial tools, to say, can we release this person versus that person? A lot of other questions come up from that. But at the volume of tens of thousands, you need some way to kind of quickly screen in a validated way that everyone agrees to, that is not just the charges in front of them.
No, in fact, I thought there was, forgive me, I thought there was some kind of computer algorithm that the courts were going to use at some point that spit out, oh, well, this individual's low risk, or this individual's medium risk. Is that, is that being implemented?
It is. And I would defer to Chief Probation Marlon Yarber about probation's pre-trial program. They use the public safety assessment to really, I think, almost everybody is being screened. And then, the court does get a recommend, not a recommendation, but information about that person's release very soon, if not almost immediately. And I would defer to Chief Probation for that, details of that. But that is one of those options.
And I would, I would assume that one of the, some of the information that comes with that is whether or not someone might be first offense, right? And perhaps that contributes to the low-risk determination, and therefore, maybe not a need to do anything but book and release, right?
And I think that's how, when he first, and I'm staying on the example of this very, you know, people that are released at arraignment, when he did those projections, we saw, that's not going to really reduce a lot of the population, but a lot of people will get out quicker. And we know that they're already low-risk or unlikely to come back anyway. But some are going to come back. And I think that's the risk we all take. But there's ways and tools at least to say, with the information in front of us, these people are less likely, and we're willing to take on that risk, knowing that it's their first time in custody, they have other kind of positive attributes. The downside is, that doesn't really have a lot about their social history, other strengths about them, it becomes down to their official record. And again, these are all just pushes and pulls that were also through one of the work groups we've started, is actually looking at all these different screening and assessment tools throughout those first few days to really make sure we know, not just that they're happening, but how can they start to link up to make the best decision possible with public safety as well as health, other social services, and not just say, we wish we knew in hindsight. Because that's, that's the problem I have with my job. I'm looking at hindsight and judging, what does this look like when, this is all happening in real time with people that are struggling with sobriety, they're struggling with, you know, their own safety issues. Like, how do you kind of do this so quickly without a little bit of automation? But automation comes with costs and trade-offs.
Thank you.
And I think the, maybe that's kind of the ongoing conversation, I'll keep this brief, was that really what we kind of saw in 2023 was, really, the population had declined as we saw about 6%, 7%. But really, the kind of the context was, the composition of the jail is always going to be changing. We had more people being committed for, what I saw was court commitments, for people that had DV charges or restraining orders. We have to kind of look into more about that. It wasn't because of a spike in DV. A lot of these are old cases that really now is a time they're going to be, maybe the sanction would come for them, or some other reason, because maybe they had deferred that sanction because of COVID to avoid the jail being impacted by it. But those are all narratives that are happening in real time amongst the Welchin decision, you know, all the improvements that, you know, are being implemented through the jail, the jail reduction plans. And maybe that's the part I would leave you with, is that the money invested by the board in '22 and '23, those programs are just now probably coming online to even have an impact. So to know if those are the things that can happen right now or not, you start looking at this historically a little bit. So the hope is to kind of make sure we can look at these things in an objective, clear way about implementation, and then look at kind of the composition of the jail in an ongoing way, not just say, did it go up or go down? Because if the jail population had gone up, what if it had gone up in ways we couldn't have predicted, not just because we didn't make the right investments? Because every year, it's going to be changing. And I think, you know, 10 years of history with, you know, California's, you know, justice system, it's going to keep changing. And I think that's all we can anticipate. So how can we give you and the community and decision-makers the best information with that ongoing change kind of expected?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the presentation?
Yes, that concludes the presentation. And this one, no actions needed. It was an update for the boards. Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the conversation, the presentation. I'd like to drill down a little more on what you're seeing in other counties, other urban counties in the state of California, because you mentioned, a lot of them have only seen a 3% reduction. Are these, are these counties that are also, because there are several counties that are also under a consent decree that's not very dissimilar to Sacramento County. Is that right, Eric?
Yes. So we looked at, of course, Sacramento, Alameda, Los Angeles, Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino, and San Diego counties.
Okay. And are some of those, I imagine, some of those are also exceeding our reduction as well?
Yes.
So what, have you learned anything from those counties, some things there? I imagine Riverside might be one of those. Is that correct?
Yes. Let me check. Which ones were the best reductions?
Yeah, Riverside actually went up.
Went up.
I know San Diego went down, but those that went down more than ours, we're reaching out to, to see what they're doing.
Okay. I'd be very interested to see that, what kind of investments that they are, that they're making. And I appreciate you talking about the IRC, that it, I mean, there's, it takes many different forms, right? I mean, Siobhan, we've talked about this as well. Could be one co-located place, but it could also be several different facilities. I mean, I have seen other, other counties, other states. It's come up at NACO, a lot of discussions at the National Association of Counties, different things, different states, different communities are doing. We've talked about the facility, the program in Pinellas County, Florida. But I really think that there, we ultimately need a booking facility that's not this place, that is treatment-centric, part of an IRC, where someone can get in because, you know, arrests are going to happen, but they are, they are taken there, they're processed, and they're put right in. they're put right into a diversionary program. I know that is expensive, this all boils down to budgetary issues. I really want to hear when we start talking budget about some ideas, how we can work through this backlog, and I'm looking at Amanda and Marlin and certainly the courts, some innovative ideas we can come up with. And Supervisor Serna, I mean, I think that's a great idea, look back at what was happening in COVID, where you didn't have that delay, what, what kinds of things were in place, what can we learn from that? So that's something that I, that I'm very interested in talking more about. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I'll just say, completely agree with Supervisor Desmond bringing up the crib, and that model always appeals to me. I think the best way to get our population down is to not increase it to begin with when it's not necessary. And having someplace for law enforcement drop-off, I think, is incredibly important. As the supervisor said, I understand it's expensive, but so is, you know, a billion-dollar facility. So I want to continue, I'm going to, I know every time I bring this up, but I want to keep looking at those types of diversionary practices, as well as things like, and thank you, Eric, for bringing up the 11 court centers, because for the big picture, clearly the more services that we provide in the community, the, the more that is also going to help us with our law enforcement issues. But with the immediate need of sending people who shouldn't be in that jail to begin with, I think that's, we continue to look at and focus on those diversionary practices. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Since we're kind of adding on in terms of, or reminding staff what's important to each of us as this continues, I would also stress the fact that, you know, we have a very focused intent, at least I feel that we still do, about looking at equitable release practices in terms of geography. So it's not just downtown Sacramento. So don't lose sight of that as well.
Thank you, agreed. All right. I believe that concludes. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next item, please.
Now, we're on item 47, which is your own rank's appointments. And specifically for today, I'm looking at action for four of your own rank boards. So I'm going to start off with the National Association of Counties. Supervisor Desmond is the member, and Supervisor Frost is the alternate, and the term expires on May 1st. Would you like to keep it the same way and just reappoint?
I'm happy if anyone else would like to do it, or I can continue.
Just keep it the same.
Keep it the same? Okay, great. And then the next is the Public Financing Authority, PFA. So on this, the terms expire on May 4th. Currently, Mr. Serna is a member, Mr. Desmond is a member, and Ms. Frost is a member. Do we want to reappoint for one more year?
I don't mind continuing.
Okay, thank you. And then we have SECOG, and I'm going to look to Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Supervisor Hume to replace me and fulfill the term that I started last year.
Okay, thank you. We will get that updated.
Mr. Chair, the clerk, can we, I don't?
You don't want me to do that?
I'm fine with that, actually. But what about, should we, I don't think we've ever designated an alternate. Can we have an alternate on SECOG?
So from the information that we received from their clerk, you can. And the way that this sits now, you already have three members, so you would be able to designate two as an alternate. There's other components to this, and I'm not prepared to speak to it, I'd have to follow up relative to the compilation, the percentages of the votes, there's a process in this, but...
I think alternatively, if one of the members of SECOG doesn't come, then the other two members carry the vote for the three. That's my understanding, but that's what I was told by, I think.
I don't think I've ever seen that put into practice.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case.
I'd be more comfortable having a couple alternates.
Yep, most jurisdictions.
At least one alternate. Nominate Supervisor Kennedy as an alternate.
So would, we can do that, we can certainly do that in this.
Why don't you bring it back and make sure that, you know, we've got our research done and we're doing it right? I wouldn't mind sitting as an alternate.
Okay, great.
Provided all the other members agree to show up every time.
Okay. For the record, I'll update it as such that you're the alternate, and then I'll follow up at the next board meeting with...
Okay.
Exactly what you can do.
That's fine.
And what this means. Great. Okay, and then final is, yes, the Public Law Library. And it looks like we need to appoint an alternate for Supervisor Frost, if you have one.
I think it's the Public Library Authority, not Law Library.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, I would like to nominate for my alternate, Tanya Kravchuk.
Would you mind spelling her last name?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask that.
That's okay, I'll check with your staff.
It's T-A-N-Y-A-K-R-A-V-C-H-U-K, but you better check with my staff.
I will, thank you so much. Okay, that concludes your own rank appointments, thank you very much. Anything else that you want to cover on this? No? Okay, good. All right, so now we can go to your nomination appointments, that's item 48. You're continuing to May 7th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. You are continuing to May 21st, the Assessment Appeals Board, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Rio Linda Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 23rd.
Thank you. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to May 7th.
Children's Coalition.
Continue to April 23rd.
Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, I'll start with you, Mr. Desmond.
Continue to May 21st, please.
Thank you. And Mr. Hume?
I would like to nominate Jesus Mendoza, and continue the remainder to May 21st.
Thank you. Okay, and County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Cassounas. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to April 23.
And then, Mr. Hume?
Same.
Same, got it. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Continue to May 7th.
Galt Arnold Cemetery District, Mr. Hume?
I'd like to nominate Charles Heacock, and continue the remainder to May 21st.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Frost?
I nominate Sean Palmer.
Okay, and do you want to waive the process?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Hume? Mr. Hume? Can you vote?
Apologies, I was like, I don't have anymore, I'm done.
Okay, unanimous vote. And then we'll continue the remainder to May 7th, is that okay?
Yes, and I wanted to also let you know that my secretary just texted me, it's Tanya,
Thank you so much. Okay, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs nominate Severin Holligsworth.
Would you like to continue the remainder to May 7th?
Correct.
Thank you. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, we'll start with Mr. Desmond.
Continue to May 21st.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs nominate Jamie Stevenson.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Mr. Desmond?
Please continue to May 21st.
Thank you. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Desmond?
Please reappoint, Martin Ross.
Thank you. Last is Veterans Advisory Commission, Mr. Kennedy?
Nominate Maxwell Bumgartner and waive the process.
Can we get a second? Thank you. Okay, unanimous vote. And that's it.
Okay. Item number 49, and County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate some of the fantastic work that our departments are doing. And starting last month, the Department of Child and Family and Adult Services launched a video campaign empowering workers while also educating the community about what the department does for children, family, and adults. In addition to that, they're looking to recruit people to come work for the county, and as a reminder, www.zaccountyjobs.com to come work for the county. But also to highlight, in addition to highlighting the great work, they released this video, this first video that was released highlights Akunbe Davis. He's a fantastic person, I had an opportunity to chat with him last week, and his commitment and devotion to really, and passion for really helping, helping our community and our, and our customers. And you heard a lot about what, what DCFAS does with that 60% reduction in the foster care, and the youth in the foster care. So if, if, I hope you enjoy this video as much as I did, it's about a minute long, and hopefully Flo can run that for us.
Hey, can you please play the video for us? Metro Cable, there we go.
I had always wanted to get into working with the county, specifically in this, the lower socioeconomically disadvantaged communities, because that's where I come from. In this field, there's a lot of misconceptions about what it is that we do. And that person comes at the door and they find out that your child protective services, instantly, they're putting up a wall. So I'm a special skills employee, that means that I am specifically skilled at working with the African-American population, as well as special skills with Native Americans. And it's easy for me to relate to them and understand, hey, look, sometimes you're, you know, going to be broke, sometimes your family's going to have a hard time. It gives me the opportunity to be that point of contact where I can assess for myself if this is neglect or if this is abuse. It's how you, you approach people, you treat them as people. And so that's what I leave in my heart. We're going to provide services, we're going to help them find assistance with another housing situation, whatever they're going through at that moment, regardless of what it is that we're investigating, we could also be a helpmeet for their current situation as well.
Thank you, Supervisor, for your time. Just wanted to remind you, our departments do fantastic work, our PIOs leverage that and get that information out into the community. We've done podcasts, we've touched on probation and the great work they do. We have sustainability one that was being recorded last week, and we have the fact sheets as it relates to homelessness, and now we have these, this video series to get the word out. And I'm hoping that that starts to change the mindset of folks and shows what a great place Sacramento County is to work. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond?
Real quick, thank you, David, that's wonderful. And I can't overstate, I've said this several times, I mean, the five of us collectively, you know, we communicate with our constituents, and sometimes we're scrambling to get our newsletters put together. I mean, hearing from Michelle today about some of the statistics that we have to celebrate in Sacramento County, any time that you have something that you could send to us in an easily digestible format that we can just plug into a newsletter, would be just really, really wonderful. Constituents love hearing about this, too. And, and, you know, I guess we don't want to hear this, but most of them are not watching these meetings on Tuesdays.
What?
But, but I appreciate, and is it Akiba, is that his name? I want my daughter to meet him, too.
Akube.
Akube, yeah. Meet him, too.
Or Mr. Davis. On that same thought, we did release our last, our next quarterly newsletter for April, May, and June, and so you can link that in your outreach that you do for your districts. So thank you.
And plagiarism's always easier than writing.
Best form of flattery, I understand.
Plagiarism's always easier than writing.
Well said. Okay, any other, any board members? All right, thank you. Then at this time, I'd like to close the meeting in a memorial adjournment. The owner of Vic's Ice Cream in Sacramento, Craig Rutledge, passed away on Monday, March 25th at the age of 73. Craig was Land Park born and raised, he spent most of his life in Land Park, graduating from McClatchy High School before running Vic's Ice Cream with his father, Ash. Family owned since 1947, this Land Park Sacramento staple restaurant has been the site of post-game celebrations, report card rewards, summertime gab sessions for more than 70 years. The original Vic's hasn't changed much since Craig's father, Ash, and his buddy Vic Zito, for whom the diner is named, banded together to open the ice cream business of their dreams. The counter stools, black and white checkered linoleum floor, and blue jean uniforms all speak to Vic's rich history and Land Park legacy. Having deep ties with the community, Rutledge also served as the Land Park Community Association Board Member and later as its president. Craig was a dedicated community leader who gave his time and resources without hesitation. Instead of stepping away, he always asked, what can I do to help? The community sends our condolences to his family and those many neighbors and friends who knew him so well, including his three Labradors, Rusty Anna and Jasmine. The community may not know everything he did to support the neighborhood, but because of Craig Rutledge's time and devotion, William Land Park and the Land Park community is a better place. He will be missed, and regardless of what Mr. Serna thinks, Vic's is still better.
I'll let you have it this day.
Okay. So we will therefore adjourn in the memory of Craig Rutledge. Thank you.